Probably less than thirty minutes, but I'm guessing. I'm guessing it's less than thirty minutes and it's now exactly nine thirty, so I gave you a good warning. Welcome to the March third meeting of the Volusia County Council Public Participation. At this time, we will hear from those of you who have taken the time to fill out a card and wish to share something that's on your mind. You will have three minutes to do that when you come to speak. Please address your comments to me and state your name and address for the record. And our first speaker today is Suzanne Schreiber. I'm gonna go with Schreiber.
Good morning. I'm Suzanne Schreiber, Ormond Beach. Thank you for-
Address, please.
Five four eight Sandy Oaks Boulevard, Ormond Beach. Thank you for your consideration of placing Volusia Forever on the ballot for Volusia County voters to vote. While I'm completely supportive of the program being placed on the ballot, I'm asking to slow down the vote as the ideal circumstances for the success of the program are not present for the council to vote today. I do have questions directed to the county attorney and to the council for clarification, which outline the concerns. Number one, the word resiliency is an undefined term and means different things to different people. I'm asking for the word to be defined so it is clear to the council and to the public. It stated that the council could choose to add this in section eleven of the draft of the resolution. Number two, I support the trust for public land pursuing public research, and it's my understanding they are unable to do this if the vote to place on the ballot by the council takes place today. There is no cost to the county for this research. The technical assistance letter can be signed showing the council's support for the initiative and good faith procedure. Number three, I'm asking for explanation of the debt service cost on the expenditures report. Number four, for continued strengthening of the program in the public eye to wait for the May audit results to support integrity. I believe all in this chamber want Volusia Forever to be successful, so careful consideration should be given, not only on how to proceed, but when it's most appropriate as well. The intention is to keep the original program of Volusia Forever intact as much as possible, moving forward with clarification of verbiage, and continuing to establish public trustworthiness. Supporting the concept is greatly appreciated, but addressing priorities is necessary as well. Thank you, and I'm submitting these questions to the clerk for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Wanda Kowetz. And I am making a note that each of you chose to spoke now as opposed to when it comes up for the agenda, so you will not be allowed to speak at both, just for the record.
Yes, I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Wanda Kowetz. I live at nine twenty-five Arroyo Parkway, Ormond Beach. My main concern is tied directly to Volusia Forever. When the county council approves zoning changes, comprehensive land use changes, and variances that result in further development, demand for water is increased and recharge areas are decreased. Furthermore, natural habitats are destroyed, upsetting the balance of nature. When development is approved, the council and its advisors do not show concern for Florida's groundwater, surface water, and springs, nor are the resources needed protected to ensure that sufficient qualities of water are available to meet the current and future needs of the natural systems and citizens of the state. Please keep this in mind the next time you're asked to approve changes in land use. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lewis?
Good morning. Mary Lewis, one eleven Riviera Estates Boulevard, Ormond Beach. Although I'm a resident of Holly Hill, I am also a member of Our Lady of Lords and a member of the Faith Housing Committee. We are here once again to urge you to address the growing issue of affordable housing in our communities. The reality is there's thousands of working families who are paying more than they can afford in rent. In fact, one out of three renters are paying over half of their income in rent. Of course, our county is not alone suffering in this crisis. The crisis has fell throughout central Florida. However, leaders in other neighboring communities are stepping up to the plate. Since Faith Action Assembly last year, at least three of these counties have announced plans to create their own Affordable Housing Trust Fund. They are Hillsborough County, Orange County, and our neighbors in Seminole County. In fact, the counties of Orange, Seminole, Osceola, and Lake are all working together on a nexus study to analyze how the local governments can raise money to address this housing issue. Fate is calling on this body to act, to follow in the footsteps of the neighboring counties to address this issue. We cannot afford inaction. Affordable housing will be front and center at our Action Assembly, which is coming up March third, six thirty, at the Peabody Auditorium. We would again like to invite each and every member of this county council to attend our Action Assembly, where over two thousand Volusia County citizens will be eager to hear what their elected officials do to address this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Brandy White. And I will need your address. You don't have your address on that, please.
I don't feel comfortable stating my full home address, and why I'm here will explain why I don't feel comfortable doing so, but I do live in the city of Deltona practically my entire life. So, Brandy White, Deltona. See something, say something, right? It's what we're being taught, it's what we're being told, but what does that sometimes get you? Retaliation and/or attempts at intimidation. The results are permanent, they're public, and they're damaging. Are you aware that you could be walking around with a pending felony charge and have no idea if somebody has pressed a charge against you? Did you know that once any file hits the state attorney's office, it becomes a public file that's easily accessible online by anyone? You read that right, you could be completely innocent, never charged, never arrested, and still will be marked permanently and publicly. In two thousand sixteen, the New York Times ran an article that said, "There's a word for people who aren't convicted of a crime, and that is innocent." They went on to identify that everyone who enters the criminal justice system can be marked for life. Even the briefest minor interaction with the justice system can leave someone with a criminal record and a permanent barrier to a job, housing, education, or even an occupational license. In fact, in two thousand sixteen, Tennessee recognized and admitted the burden of a record and a computer system can create after a class action was filed finding, quote, "It makes no sense, no case, no record." Due to the clear validity of the class action, Tennessee started implementing changes to ensure this injustice ceased and took corrective action on those already affected. So why am I bringing this to your attention today? Well, it was brought to my attention that many of you may not understand what has been going on in the entirety of Volusia County. The city of Deltona went quite rogue, and recently, the city manager used Volusia County Sheriff's Office to impose retaliation and intimidation on its residents. Not once, not twice, but three fully documented occurrences. One of these instances brought about a false felony charge. There was no investigation, it just went straight to the attorney's desk, therefore creating a damaging record that should not exist, one that I just spoke of. I was never charged, I was never arrested, and was cleared of any wrongdoing by the state attorney's office, yet this felony still appears when you look at my name under the clerk of court records. Under any simple background check, that's gonna appear, and it did appear in the middle of my adoption proceeding. In addition, it appears legit at first. I was given a case number, I was assigned a judge, one I never saw, never stood in front of, and never laid eyes on my case. Essentially, the public record is not only misleading, but extremely damaging. To his credit, Sheriff Chitwood did attend the city of Deltona's recent workshop held on January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, where he informed the commission that these instances did indeed occur, that his deputies at the time were used as, and I quote, "her personal bodyguards," and a commission nurse stated on record that Jane had overstepped her position and threatened the contract if they didn't comply. Sheriff stated, "Any foolpaw that I have under the sheriff here has been from Jane trying to manipulate the sheriff to be her personal bodyguard." We saw it, and he listed three instances.
Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
I thought we had another speaker, but I don't see her card. Is that it? Does anyone? Did you fill out a card?
Yeah.
Did you want to speak during this time or during the, when we have it?
No, because I've got another appointment I've gotta go to.
Come on, state your name. I know who you are. State your name and address for the record, and we'll get your card. I'm assuming she has it, and we'll go let you speak now.
Okay. Good morning. Bill in Law, one sixty-eight Indian Creek Road, city of Oak Hill. Good morning, council members, staff members, and citizens of Volusia County. I'm here in regards to the Echo Grants Program, Forever Volusia. We hope that the city of Oak Hill encourages you to look at the project and put it on the ballot in November and allow the citizens to continue voting on the project moving forward. The city of Oak Hill has been the recipient of several Echo Grants, and without the Echo Grant Program, a lot of these projects would have been severely delayed or scrapped altogether. With an entire city budget of only one point four million dollars to operate the entire city, we could not afford to these important programs alone. We have had five projects that have been Echo Grant funded. The first two were the VIA Hall and Chung Park. Both locations host numerous cultural civic activities, including outdoor concerts sponsored by the Friends of the Oak Hill Public Library, community events such as the Garden Club Yard Sale, and holiday celebrations. The VIA Hall is also available for private functions as wedding receptions. AARP has tax assistance programs for citizens there, and many civic organizations hold their meetings there. The Echo has helped us twice for Van Sunrise Park, first acquiring the park and taking it off the possibility of being developed commercially, and secondly, now that we're getting ready to do renovations, the park is currently undergoing renovations. There's going to be a new upgraded parking, landscaping, a kayak launch pavilion, and new landscaping, and to replace the soil that was eroded from the storm, so that we'll have more space for everybody to enjoy. We also had the re- playground equipment at Mary Deweese Park replaced last year, and it was brought up to ADA standards for everyone, so. Without the support of the Echo Program funding for small city projects for ourselves and other places like Pearson and like Helen would not be possible. These types of programs make our communities a better place to live, they also attract visitors and companies to really relocate here and to be able to enjoy the recreational cultural events and history that makes our communities the places that we love to play and work. We also must remember that acquiring properties to keep them undeveloped is a win for everyone. The creatures that make these places home and the natural beauty that they have, because once undeveloped land is developed, its natural beauty is gone forever. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Bill. Rebecca Perry. And you two are aware that you will not be able to speak later on this issue. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Perry. I'm with the North Florida Land Trust. I'm the Director of Real Estate and Community Conservation. Thank you. So I'm here in support of Volusia Forever and Echo. Our mission is to protect agricultural, natural, and historic resources in northeast Florida, so it's no surprise that I'm in support of these programs. You'll hear a lot today about all the merits of the program. I just wanted to mention that agricultural lands are also very important to the economy of Volusia County, and these lands can be protected through conservation easements through Volusia Forever. So there's over a hundred thousand acres of unprotected agricultural lands in the county, and those are often under imminent threat of development. So this program would be really helpful for that. So we support that. We also support a relook at the implementing legislation. There may be some changes that are needed to that, especially in the context of agricultural lands, being able to rank those so that they have a shot at those funds. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for making the trip from Jacksonville. Gerard Pendergast?
Good morning. Gerard Pendergast, fifty-nine hundred South Atlantic Avenue in New Smyrna Beach. Good morning, council. Thank you for moving forward the request to place Echo on the two thousand twenty ballot. Your speedy actions endorse the popularity and success of this program. May you have a good and productive day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who did not fill the card out that wished to speak at this time to tell us something that's on their mind? Hearing none, we will see you back here at ten o'clock when we will convene the work portion of the council. And we do make it a policy not to answer questions. However, any of you can reach me. I'm listed everywhere and anywhere. Any of your questions, please direct them to me or any council member, and I'm sure that you will get answers to your requests. Thank you.
Good morning. We will begin the meeting at 10 o'clock. I'm giving you a one minute and 15 second warning. We will begin the meeting at 10 o'clock. That will be in one minute and 15 seconds. So ask all of you that are trying to make your way in, if you'll please find a... We will have liftoff in less than one minute. Liftoff in less than one minute. So if you'd please find your seats. We will call the meeting to order at exactly 10 o'clock. In 30 seconds from now, the meeting will be called to order. I ask that you please make your way to your seats. Sit back, relax. No popcorn, but there'll be donuts for anyone who lets their phone go off during the meeting. Okay, we're getting close. Everyone's getting nice and quiet. Nice and quiet. It is still now, almost 10 o'clock, but we have to do this right on 10 o'clock. Can't start before that. I'm thinking it is 10 o'clock right now. Welcome to the March 3, 2020, Meeting of the Volusia County Council. We will call the meeting to order at this time and have the invocation read by... Presented by Reverend Carl Joseph and followed by the pledge. I'm going to ask council to stand with me at this time. Any of those who would like to stand may do so as well. Thank you.
Good morning. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this morning acknowledging your greatness and our weaknesses. We come before you this morning knowing that you are the Creator of all, the Creator of the universe, and the Creator of life. So Father, we come before you also expecting because you are a God of mercy and a God of love. This morning, we pray for wisdom and judgment. We pray for peace in decisions, and we pray for love in our interactions. We also pray for safety for this great nation and for this county. May your love abound amongst us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which you stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Good morning.
I understand.
While he's making his way down, for those of you who are listening online or those of you that are here, the invocation is open to any. If the leader of your faith community would like to offer it, please contact Marcy Zimmerman, the clerk's, deputy clerk's office, and she will make sure that that happens. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Lowry.
Here.
Ms. Post. Ms. Wheeler.
Here.
Ms. Denny.
Here.
Mr....Ms. Gertman.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here. The record reflects that Ms. Post is not here, so we have six hours today. The staff has asked that we pull Item C on the consent agenda. Any comments on consent agenda other than Item C? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to have D pulled just for comment. Just to have them come up and discuss it. It's a good thing.
Okay. You mean just discussion, not for pull for a vote. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda absent Item C.
Mr. Chair, one more.
Sure.
Excuse me. Would like to have Item N pulled just for discussion purposes.
Okay. All right, we have a...Did we get a motion on Item Huh?
I'm good on that for change.
Okay. Motion is made by Dr. Lowry. Who seconded it? Wheeler seconded it. Any objection to approving the consent agenda absent Item C? Hearing no objection, the motion passes unanimous, and let's go to Item D. And I guess someone wanted...Ms. Wheeler wanted to pull that for discussion.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of council. Always happy to share good news. So this is our summer camp scholarship program, and it provides just under $400,000 for scholarships for low-income children to have an opportunity to go to summer camp. So we had 16 applicants this year. One dropped out, so 15 all received the minimum score and will be able to have their children that are eligible have summer camp scholarships. So there's 15 providers to actually provide for special needs, and that's the Chase Academy in the city of Ormond Beach, and the rest are in your book.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just thought that was very important to bring out, so for our communities.
And just for the record, all of this is available online with the backup material as well, so those of you could have seen it just as I did. But anyway, we'll do it. Item N...Ms. Denny's.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Caspier's coming up on this one.
Good morning. Thad Caspier, county engineer. Item N is an agreement between ourselves and Geosam for their coastal woods development. They're putting in a multifamily development on the west side of Sugar Mill Drive directly across from where a subdivision roughly 100 units was approved previously by the city of New Smyrna Beach. The driveway locations will match up exactly. When we were reviewing the permit applications, we realized that that section of Sugar Mill needs some safety improvements. The...It's in a super elevated section in that southern curve there that where the road is doing some settling, and if we allowed them to go ahead and construct their turn lanes and other improvements, then when we came in and constructed the corrected curved section, we'd basically end up reconstructing their portion. So we worked a deal with both of the developers to go ahead and have them go ahead and pay us for the improvements that they were going to put in. In this case, they were going to be required for coastal woods, the right turn lane and the left turn lane. We will construct that on their behalf, but they're paying us the cost of what their work would be. We review the costs as a part of their driveway applications because that's how we determine certain fees, and so we knew without a mount wall approach them for that. We'll pay for the remaining work to fix the safety problem. So this is an escrow agreement that we struck with them in which the money is held by a third party. They'll pay us 50% once the project is let to a contractor, which will be coming to you in a...in a meeting here in the near future, and the remaining 50% will be paid when the project is complete.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Caspier, I pulled this item because this is in my district and have had a lot of concerns from citizens in that construction area and ingress and egress out of those intersections, but this is a really good resolution, and the city too. It's in the county, but it's city. It's...We're the same. It doesn't matter where it is, but this is a really good resolution to a situation that we have been working with, and just kudos to working with both developers and the city to find a very stable resolution for that particular area that's going to serve us all well. Thank you. I think with all the...I'm sorry, with all the emails and comments that we get on projects like this, it's good to heighten the awareness that we're working with our partners and with our cities to strengthen and harden the infrastructure intersections, and this is a perfect example of that, and taking the lead, taking the lead on that. We're the lead. We're not passing it off. We're in the front. So thank you, Mr. Caspier.
Thank you, Ms. Denny's. Okay, we'll move to Item C. This is something that not everyone, but a lot of people have been wanting to know, and I just found out this morning, and all of you will find out shortly. George, Rick.
Carl.
Mr. Chair.
George.
Yeah, I'm going to have Brad Harris come up, and he is bringing one of the industry leaders up here who has chosen our community to locate a business here, and we're very excited about it. And please find also, we distributed out an updated resolution with the actual name of the company in that resolution. And with that, Brad, I'd like you to come up and introduce our newest community member.
Good morning, Council. Brad Harris, Acting Director, Economic Development. Staff is requesting approval of a resolution to provide $55,000 in local financial support for a qualified target industry tax reimbursement incentive. That's a state incentive program to help induce Bimbo QSR to locate a new production operation with at least 55 new high-paying wage...high-wage jobs into our county. That's what this resolution is for. Bimbo QSR is a stable company. They're a high-quality manufacturing organization, and they'd be a tremendous asset in addition to our community if they choose to come here. We've got a food industry that's growing in our community, and they would make a wonderful addition to that. So for the past several months, the county's economic development partners have been working with Enterprise Florida and the Department of Economic Opportunity at the state level to capture the attention of Bimbo QSR, and I think we've been successful with that because we have them with us today. So we are hosting them today to introduce them to our community and show them the advantages of doing business in our county, and our hope is that they will select us when they make the final decision of where they're going to go. So, Mr. Chair, with your approval, I'd like to introduce some of our guests here today and have them just say a few words.
Okay, thank you.
With me today, I have Mr. Al Gomez. He is the Vice President General Manager for the Americas for Bimbo QSR. We also have with him Scott Donaldson. Scott is back. Scott is part of the team that's here evaluating and understanding more about our community. And next to him, I will introduce Mr. Keith Norden, who you all know as a president of Team Volusia. Keith will be co-hosting with me, our guests, and we have a very busy agenda. But before we head off, I'd like to introduce Mr. Al Gomez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. We're very excited about the opportunity to explore the community here in Ormond Beach and Volusia County more. We are a bakery manufacturer tied to a global...the largest baking company in the world, based out of Mexico City. Our business is very robust. As the name of the company implies, we do focus our efforts on the QSR segment, which is quick-serve restaurants. We have a robust base of business already in the region, and why we want to optimize our footprint and get closer to be able to service the customers better. Also, an opportunity to grow with targeted customers in the QSR space. I don't know how much of you follow food service. It's about a $900 billion business. QSR segment seems to be the most robust and continues to grow and deliver growth opportunities for us. We're excited to be here, excited to learn about the community. Brad and team have done a great job representing you and hosting us, and hopefully look forward to being able to be part of the community.
Thank you, Ms. Denny's.
Thank you. I've got a question for Mr. Harris, but I want to thank you...No, thank you. Stay up there for a minute because what I heard you say is you're global, so that's just one step above regional, right? So I have been said and many times and will continue to do so that regional is the new local because you can't do it alone. Cities can't do it alone. You don't stay in one city in just one area and then call that home. You branch out, correct? It's a great investment opportunity. So listening to all this, another thing that I think you're going to be hopefully very pleased with, Volusia County, what we're poised for, and you're in good hands with Mr. Norden and Team Volusia, is our supply chain. We understand...Volusia understands now more than any in separate...different sectors that it's the supply chain and building on those moments and momentum in our economic development that strengthens us as a community. So I want to thank you. I think you're a very key piece to the supply chain on these industries, the QSR industry going forward. So hopefully, we will welcome you and look forward to hopefully a groundbreaking or a ribbon cutting for you, and we'll certainly be there should you choose us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. But to that end, then, Mr. Harris, could you just...could you elaborate a little bit on a QTI? What that is?
Qualified Target Industry. So that is an incentive program that the state actually operates. It is to induce companies to select our community versus the many others they look at, and so it's a way for the state of Florida to compete with other states that have some very generous incentives that are offered to companies that are looking to locate. But the program essentially is a reward for creating new high-wage jobs in our communities, and there's a threshold. Our average wage, they must be at least 115% of that wage to qualify for this program. And it is a program that's associated with taxes already paid. It's a reimbursement program, so it's something that's coming out of taxes that the company has paid, and there's a whole verification process. So no money exchanged...is exchanged here until there's verification that those jobs were in fact created and that they were created at the wage that they committed to. So that's essentially the program, and it's a partnership between Enterprise Florida, the Department of Economic Opportunity, and the local community. So we are the key as we consider this, and if we approve this, that opens the door for this incentive to move forward.
Thank you. I think that's the emphasis on that with the regional for the state. Our regional is Enterprise Florida, DEO, and our local community, but nothing...and we're talking $55,000. I mean, I don't want to nullify that, but at the same time, congratulations, and this is a great match with the state and great partnership. Look forward to it.
Ms. Gertman.
Great. Would certainly look for an opportunity to welcome you. Would this be a redevelopment of an existing property or a new build?
It is a redevelopment of an existing property that was formerly a distribution center for actually food service. They currently have some other tenants. We're looking to move into part of that facility and build a manufacturing site there.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay, is there a motion somewhere, Ms. Denny's?
Move approval of Item C resolution of participation of Project Ocean in the Qualified Target Industry refund program.
Motion made by Dennis, seconded by Lowry. Any further discussion or questions? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous and welcome, and we're excited. I kept getting phone calls as we all did. I said, "I don't know," and if I did know, I couldn't tell you, but...and I didn't know until this morning. So now everyone knows. Caspier, you can let everybody know that we all know now. So thank you very much. We'll move to... Thank you. We'll move to Item Two. And this would be George.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is a...you'll be seeing a couple of these. We've already had done similar agreement with our Division of Elections. Today, we have our property appraiser, Mr. Larry Bartlett, here in the audience. As you know, we've had a team of people that have been working on these transitions for several months now, and today we have before you memorandum of agreement that Mike's going to go over some of the parts of it here quickly, but it's very, very similar to what we had done with the Department of Elections. So if we could have the...Go ahead. Just we got some background.
So Volusia is one of 20 charter counties in the state of Florida. It's a special act charter. It's one of the first in the state. Next slide. The charter abolished the offices of...the constitutional offices of property appraiser, sheriff, and supervisor of elections and transformed them into elected department heads. The office of tax collector was abolished, and all of those duties were transferred to your revenue department, subject to the direction of your county manager. So absent a court ruling otherwise, Amendment 10 will take effect in January 5 of 2021. So as you've heard before, we've...the manager appointed a transition team to work with each of our future county constitutional officers to implement Amendment 10 should it take effect in an orderly fashion. We have worked to identify solutions and issues on the way and look at best practices from other peer counties. So we're here today...Next slide. And one more. With a memorandum of agreement, it is similar to what you have seen by way of the supervisor of elections, which you recently approved, and it addresses essentially those services that would be provided by the county to the property appraiser going forward when the transition would take effect. We would also have subsequent detailed agreements. If you were to approve this agreement today, that's similar to what we described with the supervisor of elections, to really drill down... the supervisor of elections, to really drill down on some of the details of the employee benefits and risk management programs and fleet management participation, but that would be a later day. Next slide. Mr. Bartlett has worked with us and his team, and the memorandum of agreement reflects his direction. The county employees that are employed within the property appraiser's office would no longer be employees of county government on January 5th, but employees of that office, and leave balances which exist would, on January 4th of next year, would transfer with those employees. Next slide. The property appraiser has elected to remain at the office in this building on the first floor and would retain branch offices in Holly Hill, New Smyrna, and the Orange City, which have previously been approved by this council. Next slide. So the arrangement today that's presented to you is very similar to what you saw with the supervisor of elections. The property appraiser is elected to continue to contract with the county for central services, business services, financial, community information, and largely human resources, with some limited exception. Next slide. The property appraiser is elected to continue, like the supervisor of elections, and your self-insurance programs, risk management, continue to use the county attorney's office for legal services under, other than proceedings in Chapter 194, which are specific to the property appraiser, legal challenges to property appraisals, continue to use information technology of the county, and is elected to utilize the internal auditor as needed and directed. Next slide. The costs would be, for those services, would be accounted for annually, and the property appraiser's budget and reimburse to the county through something called an indirect cost distribution, which is something you do have in effect today. The county would provide the indirect cost transfer to the property appraiser during the budget preparation process. Next slide. So as I said earlier in the presentation, if you approve this memorandum of agreement today, we will move forward with further implementing it with more detailed agreements, but this memorandum of agreement basically establishes the path forward so we can move forward in a seamless way. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
That is subject to the fact that we may not prevail. Correct?
That is correct. If the memorandum of agreement is conditioned on Amendment 10 taking effect. Thank you.
Right. I knew that, but I just wanted to make that. Mr. Johnson?
I'll make a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement between the county and the property appraiser for services.
Motion made by Johnson, seconded by Wheeler. Ms., oh, sorry. Any other discussion? Any questions? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion passes unanimously. And Larry, thank you for being willing to work with us on this because the ones that actually benefit from this is, one, your office without having interruption, but mainly the taxpayers who are not going to experience a huge increase in the overall operation by splitting this off. So thank you for that.
I totally agree, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for letting me come talk to the council today. I did want to say that Mike drives a hard bargain. So the county's being well-served by the new interim county attorney.
Well, and that speaks well coming from an attorney yourself. So when two attorneys get together, it's very difficult oftentimes to come to an agreement, but you did come to a very good agreement, and again, we all win on this one. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just also wanted to give Mr. Bartlett a lot of kudos in that, working with us, and on top of that, just like with the supervisor of elections, you know, in this county, we have a lot of big events, special events, and sometimes we have disasters. And Mr. Bartlett's office is an integral part of any kind of disaster recovery effort that we have, and he's agreed to continue to work in that capacity. It's a critical need that we will have if we were to have any major damage. His office helps us with that estimate and is very important, and his mapping and his GIS and a lot of the other technology that he has is vital for us, and I appreciate that he's going to continue to work with us.
We're all here to do what's best for the county, so look forward to working with you again.
Larry? Okay, we'll move to Item Three, and this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing, and Clay Urban has a staff report.
Good morning. Clay Urban, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Before you today is an ordinance approving our five-year capital schedule. This is a requirement of Florida Statutes, Chapter 163, as part of the Community Planning Act of Florida. Basically, this is an accounting process. We send to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity a five-year capital schedule. We also have to incorporate other plans from the school board, TPO, excuse me, Transportation Planning Organization, and the Florida Department of Transportation, District Five. What you see is basically all of their schedules for capital improvement so that we can utilize that information in the implementation of our concurrency management system. This was presented to our Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. There was no comments from them, and it was unanimously recommended for approval. If there's any questions from staff, we'll be glad to answer them.
Okay. I have no one from the public wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing on this and entertain a motion. Ms. Gertman.
Sorry. I'll move to approve the Ordinance 2020-6, updating the five-year schedule of capital improvement plan, capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan for Class A concurrency monitored public facilities for FY 2019, 2020 through 2023, 24, case O-20-026.
Motion made by Gertman, seconded by Wheeler. Any questions or discussion? Hearing no. Any objection to the motion? Hearing no objection. The motion passes unanimously, and we will go to Item Four. This, too, is a public hearing. We will open that portion of the meeting of the business. Mr. Urban?
Good morning once again. Clay Urban, Director of Growth and Resource Management. This is the adoption hearing for your coastal management element. This was an item that you transmitted to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and Volusia Growth Management Commission back in December 2019. These are changes to our coastal management element to update it to ensure it's in compliance with the Florida Community Planning Act, also to ensure that it's consistent with our regional resiliency action plan that this council approved previously. It is basically tied to ensuring that we are addressing perils of flood as well as other coastal issues. The VGMC, our Volusia Growth Management Commission, did not have any comments. We did receive four recommendations from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. That's identified in Page 4-2 of your agenda packet. Basically, it was addressing some of the statutory language to make sure it was fully identified in the body of the document, also to clarify coastal high hazard. The other thing is to clarify what we meant by hurricane vulnerability zone, and then also to include specific addition and dates that are associated with the East Central Florida Regional Resiliency Action Plan. We've accomplished all four of those in this updated amendment. It's in front of you. We believe it meets all the criteria established by the Florida Community Planning Act, as again, both the PLDRC recommended approval as staff, and right now, it's just final action. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I'll close the public hearing. We have no one wishing to speak. Ms. Wheeler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion to adopt the Ordinance 2019-20 Adoption Hearing for the Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Coastal Element CPA-19-002.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Johnson? Ms. Wheeler, I mean, Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is really timely with these two agenda items and coming up to talk about Echo and Volusia Forever and where we're going to go here for the future of Volusia County. But these two documents, even Item Three, that's a very comprehensive document, right, Clay? And not just the county, but with concurrency to school board and our other agencies. So it's our whole region that's included in that. And now with Item Four, this is a coastal element. So when we talk about our wetlands and protecting our environment, this is set in law, and there's many layers to this that goes, that we go through. Mr. Manager, Mr. Rec. Walden, I'm going to, sorry. So when we go forward with projects like this, and any project that comes, there's checks and balances, and I think sometimes that's what gets missed when we just have a single item or a single plat or a single project. What gets missed along that is that there's checks and balances, and there's a great foundation, not that we have set, but that we comply with, set from the federal, the state-
Correct.
-and our other agency partners that we are required to comply with. We just kind of fill in the blanks sometimes when a specific project to a specific land area comes through is, right?
That's correct.
All of my housekeeping there.
It is. And again, you know, we set out, like I say, a council has set a larger direction with previous comprehensive plans, and then our projects come in, of course, and make that direction a reality. And like you said, each individual one, sometimes it gets lost in that fact that they are part of a greater plan. And both in the comprehensive plan, of course, we have the dynamic master plan, which gets a little bit more specific, and then, of course, we bring even our working capital plan to you, which will be coming up in one of the next two meetings, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just thought that was a good point.
Absolutely. Any additional questions or comments? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion passes unanimously without objection, and we will move to Item Five, and... Yes.
On Item Number Five and Item Number Six, are we going to, there's no public input on these items, is there?
No, we're not going to let anybody speak. I'm just kidding.
That was a good catch. So, so with that being said, since it's not advertised, if anybody wants to speak to this during public input time, they can fill out cards to speak to us. I just think that it's, it's not on the agenda, and I don't want, because we didn't take public input during the workshop, I know that there's a lot of people in the audience right now that may want to go on the record on one or two of these or both of these items.
Okay. Well, let me also remind you, this is probably the first bite or second bite of the apple, because we are not voting, per se. We're giving direction to staff. So if you would, those of you who would keep your comments as brief as possible, we all have been dealing with, everyone up here has worked with Volusia Forever and Echo personally in Norman Beach for many, many projects, so we are aware of the value of what they do. And if you would be courteous, because we do have a full schedule the rest of the day, and again, when it comes back for a vote, you'll get another bite. So today is direction and refining the issue. So with that, George?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have these two items here before you, and as stated from our last meeting, when we outlined a very general outline of where you, council would like to go with this, from that, we have prepared a presentation today that will hopefully allow you to give us some direction on several points that may be required for the ballot language, if you guys choose to go forward with that, and the enabling resolutions. So with that, if you'd like, we'd go ahead and start with that, and then there'll be areas here that...
I think if we do it that way, it may answer some of the questions, concerns, or the fact of what we're looking for, so that those of you that are here will see what we're looking at, what we're facing, and we know the question, we know some of them, and some of, one of them has already been addressed this morning, which we obviously, or three of them, which we obviously knew. So it would maybe help speed this up, but not to make light of the fact that those of you took time off from your busy day to come out. We do want to hear from you. So we'll start with the presentation on Volusia Forever.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. In the front row of the middle section is a team that we've worked with to bring this forward to you today, and as if any questions that are specific to those subject areas come up, I may defer to them, but I'm very appreciative of the work they've done to get this together for you to consider today. Next slide. The Forever Program, as you know, was adopted in the year 2000 and was approved by a vote of 61%. And the program's objectives were defined in that original resolution adopted by council, and its focus was the acquisition of water resources and environmentally sensitive land for conservation and public use. And through the life of the program, more than 38,000 acres have been acquired through either purchase or conservation easements of the county. The program has also won several national awards and has been used as a model for other government acquisition programs. The program is funded by taxes, ad verum taxes, from an annual levy of not exceeding one-fifth of a mill, and the original term of the program was 20 years, and the original bond referendum also authorized the issuance of bonds payable from millage derived from that program. The objective in the original program was to match funds awarded in the, from the Florida Forever Program or other similar federal programs, and projects were limited to restoration, conservation, or preservation of environmentally sensitive lands and water areas and for providing public use opportunities. The program that was implemented by council gave priority to acquisitions which achieved a combination of conservation and resource-based recreation opportunities, and access was been managed and maintained by the county to ensure a balance between that access and restoration and protection. The resolution that was adopted in August of 2000 set forth a program with policies and procedures. It also established an oversight committee, which has been part of providing feedback to you during this process today, and established the goals and priorities and public access for the program. And as we discussed at the workshop, there have been a number of resolutions which we have provided to you by council to further implement this program, and one of those was a 10% set aside of funds for management of the acquisitions of this program. Because the program had run its course in expenditure of the funds, the council suspended operation of the Forever Board in 2000, the last levy under the program will be this November, and bonds that have been issued are, the last payment will be due in October of 2021. So there's a four-step process that would apply both to the Forever and Echo today. Essentially, what this is, is a bond referendum. The millage levy itself does not require referendum approval, but pledging that ad verum revenue to repayment of bonds does require voter approval. And the first step would be for council to order the referendum election, the general election of this year, and that would require us to, under statute, to give a series of notices to the public of that vote. The referendum would occur on November 3rd, and the results would be certified by the supervisor of elections like any other election result. The resolution ordering the referendum must be adopted no later than August 4th, which is the absolute latest to make for, make the timelines for the general election and printing of ballots. I know that we have started this process five months earlier to get a head start on this, but that would be the absolute latest in working with the supervisor of elections to accomplish this. What is attached to this agenda item is a resolution calling for the election for you to consider. It is modeled on what council adopted 20 years ago. We have a series of decision points, three decision points we're going to walk through in a minute, to get direction from council to see if you wish to modify the resolution based on some of the feedback you received from your Forever Committee as discussed at your workshop. So, Mr. Chair, the first decision point today, and this, we're going to walk through several decision points. Some must be addressed in the ballot language, and others can be addressed now or at a later time, but this first one is one that would have to be decided in the ballot language. And one of the things that's identified in the ballot question is a cap- And one of the things that's identified in the ballot question is a cap on the amount of, the size of a bond that could be issued from funds from this program. The program that was adopted 20 years ago had a cap of $40 million for bonding and that was utilized. And I'm gonna defer to Mr. Osowski here for a minute. One question came up and discussion was, well, what would that bond amount look like 20 years later? And Mr. Osowski has some feedback on that.
Good morning, Chair, Council. The bonding amount, Ryan Osowski, Chief Financial Officer, the bonding amount of $60 million was calculated with-
To be 40.
The, the potential to revise to 60 million was, was calculated based on what the revenues would allow for future bonding. So with, in consultation with our debt advisors, they advised that there is a certain amount that the bond market would consider and we worked into what that amount is and their recommendation and my recommendation would be 60 million would be the most that you would potentially want to use as a debt levy. You could keep it at 40 million.
The reason I interrupt you, Ryan, is we had discussed in our meeting, we discussed what the 40 equivalent was in 20, in 2000, what it would have been today. And I think you gave me a number.
60 million.
Yes, okay. That was the, that's what, that's where I thought you were going on that.
Both of them worked out the same. If you adjusted it by CPI, it's roughly 60 million. The, the amount that our financial advisor recommends that the bond market would, would approve would also be 60 million.
Okay. So that's, that's one of the first things that you want us to, to look at, Michael?
Yes, sir. And the next slide shows you where that would fit within the resolution, what we've highlighted in yellow. That's the ballot question that's in the draft resolution before you. And the resolution you have has a figure of 40 million. If you were to change it to 60 million or some other figure, that's where we would put it.
Okay. My, my thought is let's work through the rest of them and then come back and look at them overall.
Thank you. The second decision point is an issue that does not have to be part of this resolution, but the original resolution that called for the election 20 years ago did identify a series of goals or objectives of the program. And some of the feedback you received from your forever work group was the question of adding, addressing regional resiliency and sustainability as an acquisition goal in the resolution. If you did not do that, that's something that could, if you did call the election and the voters did approve continuation of it, could be added at a later date. But since it was addressed and recommended to you, wanted your direction on that next slide. And just by way of some background of that, in 2012, the county council did adopt a sustainability action plan, which, and one of its goals was to protect, restore and manage natural lands, manage and protect surface water bodies, protect threatened and endangered species and plan for adaptation to sea level rise. Next slide. And in 2019, this last year, the council adopted the East Central Florida Regional Resiliency Action Plan, which also addressed several objectives. So you have, next slide, you have defined that by actions taken by this council and previous councils. And again, this was a recommendation from the forever work group for you to consider. Next slide. And in the resolution where this would fit in, in section 11, you see a list of acquisition goals that were part of the original program. Next slide. And if you did add a reference to resiliency, it's highlighted in yellow. And the last decision point for this program also was derived from a recommendation from your work group. And the question is, should this resolution address a set aside for public access, management and improvement of lands that are required through the program? And this is an issue that was not included in the original resolution calling for the election 20 years ago. However, next slide, it was added by council in an implementing resolution in 2004. So that 10% is something the program is operating under today.
Okay.
And the forever work group recommended that the council consider increasing that set aside from 10 to 15%.
Okay. While we're on that one, I think we can take the low-hanging fruit. All of us have had discussions on that because what has happened in the past is we've had to use general fund dollars to supplement this, which I really did not like that we did that. So if council can, pardon for the, right, this is, this is what we're talking about right now and what I would suggest that we consider going forward, we can have discussion on increasing it to the 15%. Eliminate the easiest part of the two points that we have to have go, going forward. Mr. Johnson?
I agree with you fully on that. Probably the one complaint that I've ever heard about any of this stuff is the fact of having to come out of general funds for the maintenance and we have to look down in the future, although we're building it today, some of these trails, you know, in 10, 15 years, we're gonna have some major funding come up to keep them in shape. And when you're talking about a bicycle trail, you can't afford to have potholes and other things that's gonna create liability for the county. But it's just in general, if we're gonna have it, we need to make sure that, and I'm very much for having it, but we need to make sure that we are keeping it up so that we can keep the jewel shiny.
Mr. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I totally agree. However, I'd like to hear from our public. My only concern is-
Well, I was just, I was just gonna work on this one as low-hanging fruit, then I was gonna go to public comments.
Understand, but where I'm going with this is, do you want to change the ballot language because of it? I'm not so sure we want to alter the ballot language. I, if we can, if we can implement in a resolution after it passes, I think that the less that we change the ballot language for the citizens, I think the more stable an argument that you make and then we come back and work with the implementation resolutions on some of these details. And it's my understanding, the only one we have or should, I guess, have to, is the first one-
Is the first one.
Let's just stick to, just stick to this one if we can. I wanna try to get this one li, knocked out, lined up or move forward on this particular one, one. We know what we have to do on the others.
So if you're asking if this should go in the ballot language, I'm gonna say no.
Okay. And for the same reasons that you said, I want to be as transparent and as defining, definitive of what this exactly is as possible so that people know. So Mr. Lowry?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask staff, does they feel the going from 10 to 15 is going to be satisfactory or if we're gonna be in the same position 20 years from now?
I'm gonna have the, the team, we, we met about this yesterday, the last few days actually, because there's something to consider here. The purpose of getting the general fund point part out, we, we understand and it may accomplish that part of it, but there's also, then you'd have maybe the ongoing cost of 20 years down the road. So they'd like, go ahead and, and talk about where the program is.
I have Donna Butler, I have the programmatic response and that is, we don't know definitively if 15% is sufficient if we're moving everything back in from the general fund. So we, we really would like to have that flexibility and have you all make the decision after in your implementing resolution. But there's also very technical, financial information too.
Let me offer this. Why couldn't it be in there as a minimum of 15%?
It, it could be. That's an option.
You set aside that the minimum of 15% will be set aside, which doesn't restrict you from a resolution going forward, but it lays out to the public what the money's for and it protects it from having to be at the hands of a future council that will not be voted on necessarily by the residents, the people that are gonna be voting to tax themselves. Mike?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you could go to the next slide. This is where we would propose, if you did decide to address it in the resolution calling for the election, where it would go.
You already put it in there.
Well, it was modeled, just trying to make sure you know where your options are. This is where it would go in the resolution, but just to clarify, the set aside was never in the ballot language. It was always an implementation step by council. So if you were to be silent on that at this time, you could address it by resolution later as council did four years after it was adopted in 2004. So it does not have to be determined today.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
One thing I think we need to be clear about right here, I think we're up here throwing our ideas out, not policy. So the people out there, this is things that we think, so y'all can look at them because that's where we want it to go. My belief is, is one, we need to get the resolution off the table as soon as possible so we can get rid of the lobbying end and get down to the nuts and bolts of it, of how we're gonna do it. But what we say up here today, and I'm sure we're gonna hear back on social media, how the county council took this thing over and weren't listening to the people, but it's our chance to tell the people who are deciding some of the ideas we have so they can yes or no on it and, and we can go ahead that way. So please understand that.
Well, what I thought was gonna be low-hanging fruit turned out to be at the very tip-top of the tree. As often happens, we need to get a bigger ladder. So with that being said, we'll get off of our tippy toes and get a bigger ladder and, and.
Well, Mr. Chair, we do have good, I think, a good understanding of your general desire on the general fund. So I think, you know, rest assured, we'll be working in that direction.
Okay. I think we even disagree necessar, we, we're discussing, we can be disagreeing, disagree on the process. I think we need to get as much input as possible as we laid out in the workshop. And then we're said, why do you wait so long? And then they'll say, why do you rush? So this morning we heard, you're rushing it through and the other thing was, you waited too long. So my point was, let's get as much information as, as we possibly can. Ms. Gertman?
I don't think there's a question about on the ballot, not on the ballot. All right? I think we're mostly in agreement that it should go on the ballot. Perhaps the timing of that, but most of what's being represented here is part of the clarification and detail. It's not what needs to go on the ballot and I think we don't need to confuse it. We need to keep it simple and let the committee and let the people decide and let them help give us the feedback for the 15%, you know, and the other challenges that we're gonna have to work through. So I'd like to hear from the people and I'd like to get it out there early enough for the people to talk to their sphere of influence so we can know how we're moving forward. So let's hear from the people.
Okay, Ms. Wheeler?
Yeah, I, I agree with council member Gertman. The important thing is to get it on the resolution moving forward as far as I'm concerned, to get it on the ballot, but that the implementation, we need to hear from the citizens on this and, and go forward with it from that point. And, but I think we do need to do this as soon as possible so there is time. I don't want to wait until August. I think we need to have this ASAP so we have enough time to get out in the community where the organizations have enough time.
If we're gonna decide the implementation later, it doesn't matter what the people say because that's gonna be done later. That's the point I'm trying to make. The implementation and what we're gonna be doing with this, if you don't put that in there, I'm not gonna support it that you don't lay out that we have maintenance costs and that we're gonna take care of the properties that we have. Had I known when we voted on it in 20, in 2000, that you're gonna be using general fund money to maintain the property, I don't think that's right. There's enough revenue that's been generated that we should not, what was the amount, what was the number, Ryan? 250,000, 300,000? What was the number per year?
The amount that the general fund is paying? Currently it's 570,000.
577,000 a year from your general fund taxes. You wonder why our taxes are high? Things like that to sneak up on us that all should have been included in this tax that we taxed ourselves. And I think the people deserve to know that we're gonna have to maintain it. Commissioner, council member Johnson stated, you know, we want to keep this jewel polished, but it costs. Too often things are put in place without the idea of you're gonna have to maintain it, there's a maintenance cost, or you're gonna allow the people to use it. There's also a cost there. All these costs need to be figured into there and the public, to me, should demand to know where the money's gonna go instead of it being the implementation later. I'll just, I'll lose, if I lose this, I lose it. But I mean, I just, that's how strongly I feel. It's, we're just discussing, if I lose, I'll smile, laugh, have a drink of water now and something later. Ms. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you, Councilman Johnson, for your comments on the discussion and council talking. It's called the Florida sunshine law. This conversation only occurs when we're together publicly and it's kind of taken on a life of its own in some subcultures from our workshop and things being misquoted and taken out of proportion from some dialogue. I'm gonna address that at the end because I don't want to get into that right now. But this discussion that we're having, we've got to have. And, and it's, it's not, it's not a negative or a positive, we're just trying to work through it. But at the same time, the councils, previous councils made a commitment to the management of 10%. So I'm con, I'm comfortable, Mr. Chair, to, to detail that in the implementation language if that's the way it goes.
To detail that as 10% instead of 15?
No, 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 whatever it is.
Okay, okay.
15, 18, 16.5.
We're getting somewhere.
Right, I'm, well, I-
Maybe.
So. In the implementation. And at that point though, but we have to go back to the ballot language and I'm just cautious about adding anything we don't have to add and that allows more, it will actually allow more input time because we will have, we'll set the stable foundation. And then with our Volusia Echo and our advisory groups and going out into the public, how do we get to the detail of that implementation and what will it look like? Because there might be something coming up where we don't even, haven't even identified yet. So for me, I think the first step is securing the ballot language that we all agree on, agreeing to put it on the ballot. And another thing that's not, we haven't talked a whole lot about and we didn't do much of it at the workshop, is that we do have an internal audit occurring in a parallel universe right now for Echo and Volusia Forever. This council unanimously agreed that our first project for our internal auditor was to audit these two, these two budget items. So that's a level of certainty that we can share with our citizens on that. And I think you said it'll be done mid-May, Mr. Manager.
May.
Mid-May?
Yes.
So that's happening now. So again, we've got checks and balances, we've got internal auditing, there's a lot going on behind the scenes for this because we have to justify it absolutely.
Let me, let me see if I can get a summary of what you just said. You don't want to have language included that it would be up to 15% in the ballot. And I, again, I don't see how that confuses anybody. It just makes, but you, that's, that's what, that's what you said.
If I was, so here's the summary, we have three options that staff gave us, one, two and three. The first one's actually, instead of the last one, I believe it's the first one, we need to identify-
Well, this is the only one that changes it. The other two were pretty much the same.
No, the first one goes from 40 to 60% in bonding. That's actually a whole lot bigger than this one.
Forty to sixty million.
Forty to 60%. That, that's, that's million. Yeah, 40 to 60 million, excuse me. Yeah. So I would make the case that the, the option we really need to come to an agreement on is the first option that has to happen in the ballot language because it is, it's existing in the ballot language.
Correct.
The 40 was in the ballot.
Right, but the bonding has to be addressed in the, in the-
So it's actually the first item, I believe, we need to identify and then build it, the foundation from there.
Let's move on from this one. I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to do is to move on from where we are right now, which I thought would be easy to establish. If you don't want to put it in there to tell the people, we're gonna set aside up to 10% or 15% for maintenance, then tell me and let's move on.
That's not the message, Mr. Chair. That's not the message.
That's what I thought I heard.
That's not the message. The message is we will identify that after, after the vote.
And that's what I don't want, but that's just me. So that's what you're saying. You don't want it, you don't want it on the ballot, you don't want the 15% for maintenance on the ballot. If, if y'all don't want it, we'll listen to the public.
Let's see what council wants to do.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
No, and we can just talk it, that's what we're trying to decide. If you don't want it, let's move on from this one or have staff come, George?
I just, we're gonna make a suggestion that I think we've laid out what the, the points are. You guys have had some discussion on them. My recommendation is we, I want to listen to the, the- to the, the audience today that wants to speak, maybe giving you some time to hear some of the ideas that may come out of that. And I think some of the speakers maybe, may have some experience in the program and may want to speak about that. But my recommendation would be, let's hear that for forever and then come back and maybe you'll have a little bit better idea. And let's also remember today, you, you can do a couple of different things, which you can direct us to come back. That's one of the reasons we wanted to do, have this discussion sooner rather than later because if you can't decide, if you want us to research something, we have time to do that. And, and in fact, one of our tools, you know, that we might want to use, the trust for public lands, we have to use them before you guys decide to put it on the ballot because after that, it would be considered a lobbying effort that we're not allowed to do. So there's certain things if you want to do, you might want to do it before you actually put it on and make that final vote. So today, we can come out of it with a lot of information or we can go all the way. I'm just, just letting you know, but I think you might want to hear from the audience.
And we do want to do that. And I want to spend more than 35 minutes of our time discussing a $300 million issue. Right? And I don't think we can come to a conclusion, we shouldn't, on something like that. And I can guarantee you what the public, we're going to let the public hear it, they're going to say, we want it, do it. And that's what we're going to hear from 90% of them. So I'm willing to listen, but I thought I would try to get some of these things laid out there that we have to go forward because let's go ahead and if you have, we don't know where we're going, we know what we've got to do. And we're going to listen and that's why I wanted more workshops later on. I don't want this anyway. We'll go ahead and listen to the public, see what they say, Ben.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a statement before we get to the public. And, and I think there's certain things that no matter what, the county council's going to be responsible for. And we have to set a few boundaries somewhere. And even in the 15%, most everybody I've talked to, even when we said 15% a while ago, I'm watching the heads shake out there and realize what we're talking about. But can it be, if we did do it, could it be modified? Say that it came back from the hearings, could we re-modify the budget question? You know, at that time. But we need to get it moving so that we can get past this first part and actually get down to what are we need to do. And there are certain things that I think we don't want to clutter this amendment because the more we clutter it, the more it's going to happen. And I did find out one thing since I became a county councilman, I never realized how stupid I was. And the general public will let us know that this afternoon. But.
Well, at least half of them.
But I mean, really.
Don't know about the other half.
I think, I think that the percentage and the bond, at least the percentage and the bond need to be in there so the people see that right off the bat. The rest of it is resolution and housekeeping. And I really think if you had the people raise their hands out here, if you could ask that question, each one, and ask the people just sitting here, and you'd get a pretty good idea of where it would go. Thank you.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and those of you who have waited patiently to sit here, tell us what you can specifically. I would like to have specific, and I can't tell you what to say, obviously, but if you just get up here and say you like it, you like what it's done, we know that. I've been responsible for at least four programs in Ormond Beach achieving, not the Forever, but for the Echo. So we do know the value of these. So if you have some thoughts that you want to share with us specifically, and this is not the last bite of the apple, but Steve Wonderly, if you'd like to share something, take three minutes or take the time you want to take, Steve, and, and share with us your thoughts and we certainly want to listen and that's the point. We do want to listen, we want to hear. And you see what we're faced with now, but more than most of you knew before that. Thank you.
Good morning. Steve Wonderly, 711 North Halifax Avenue in Daytona Beach. I am also a member of the Sierra Club Executive Committee for the state of Florida and therefore representing the Sierra Club also. I will be, I think, extremely brief. First of all, is thank you for considering putting Volusia Forever and Echo on the ballot. And second, I'd like to encourage you to take the steps necessary to put it on the ballot as quickly as possible. That's all I had, but I'm happy to take your questions if you had.
Love to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Don Hoag?
Hi, I'm, I'm, I live at 203 South Orchard Street, Ormond Beach. Been living here six years. I'm a property owner, I pay the tax on these things and I'm happy to pay it because I think they're great programs. I volunteer with Sierra Club and on, on the issue set aside, I'm just, since you addressed it, I talked to Doug Weaver a while ago and he explained this, that you need more money to maintain the property. Makes perfect sense. I don't think anyone disagrees that you need more money. We are, we do have some concerns about adding anything to the ballot language. And let me back up a little bit on that. The ballot language has been tested by thousands of people successfully. They voted for it. It's been a very, very successful program. It's a model for the country. So to change the ballot language in any way would probably not be a good idea. Now, the resolution that you guys talk about, it's public, we all know about it, to add money for maintenance. Now, that makes perfect sense to me. So you have a resolution and you say right now, 15%. But it gives you the, and you pass it and we all see it and we all can comment on it and we don't get mad at it if it's too much and we can all come back and not vote for you if you spent too much for maintenance, but.
No, not if you don't vote for me, but go ahead.
But 15% sounds reasonable, I think, to all of us. And if you come back, if, if you limit it in some way and put it on the ballot, you cannot say a, a minimum of, because a minimum of sounds like it could be 100% later. So you can't do that. So I would be in favor, and I think the Sierra Club would be in favor of 15%, but not putting it on, on the ballot language, using it for the resolution that we all see, we all understand you, what you're doing, it's transparent. If you need more money for maintenance, more than 15% ten years from now because of some issues on trails, which I like to use, for hiking, well then, come back and do the resolution and let us know and let us make our public comments whether you should, you should even have more than 15%. So that's how I feel about that. And of course, you know that I'm in favor of Volusia Forever. The Echo program, we don't take a position on, but as a property owner and as a private citizen, I'm also in favor of that. I, I benefit from that all the time because of all the activities I participate in. Thank you.
Pat Northee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your earlier comments on, on both programs. Can I just ask a question? If I, as I understand what's happening today, you're not going to be taking a final vote. So you have some time and you have had an offer from TPL, and I think, I think they spoke earlier this morning at public participation. That might be an area that you would want to explore with them is, is have them do some polling on it. My personal opinion, 60 million bond, put the language for the next two items, sustainability, which is very, very important, and, and the 15%, which I think is very important. And I agree with the earlier speaker, you might, you know, 10 years from now, it might need to be 18% or 20%. And if you put it in the ballot language, you can't change that. If you put it in the implementation language, the resolution can always come back to the council. Everybody knows, will know what is happening because of the resolution and the ballot language. So that would be my 60 million bond, put the other two into implementation language. And buy yourself a little bit of time, if that's what you're doing now, invite TPL to the table.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Weaver, sorry, you go. Okay, thank you. Kathleen Wallum, Kathleen. Kathleen Wallum, W A L L U M. Did I mispronounce it? Did I mispronounce that?
Hallam, I'm sorry, I heard something different, though.
Oh, it looks like a W, sorry.
My writing's terrible. So my name is Catherine Hallam, I, I live at 2120 Foxfire Lane, Deland, and I'm very grateful to be here to listen to the various comments here. This is not something I normally attend, but I'm very strong about Florida Forever and Echo. I use the trails all the time between hiking, biking, and kayaking. And it's not just me at my age, because I'm very fortunate to be retired, but it's families with very young children, it's a lot of people. And I know you're very aware, as you said earlier, of the amount of use that we get on the trail, but this is such a positive, you know, and it's nice. And I don't mind spending the money for, you know, it, you've already, how do I want to say this? I don't mind taxes going for something like that, not just because I use it, but because so many other people also get the benefit of using it. I will try to be brief because you did ask for that. I do agree with the person who just spoke, the gentleman who said, put the maintenance in the implementation of it. Let's get it out there now so groups can promote this for, you know, for the ballot and really get people behind it and educate people about it. But some of these things that you're worrying about, the percentage, whether it's 10, 15, put it in the implementation stage, please. And let's just get on with the business of putting this out there to vote on it, to be able to vote on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Lavitt? Or Luvetti?
Elizabeth Lavett, 1820 Hibiscus Drive in Edgewater. I also am here representing Edgewater Environmental Alliance. Thank you for having this appear so quickly on the agenda. I too would like to see it get in, onto a ballot as soon as possible. I agree with the speakers that just spoke, you're getting caught up in the weeds that need to be determined after the vote passes, okay? When, in the implementation. My concerns aren't so much about that, it's about a conversation that Ms. Denny's brought to light at the end of the town or the workshop that you had. And my concern is this, obviously, I support Volusia Forever and Echo, as everybody in this room, I believe, does. And we've had great gifts from them. You don't know what you don't know, right? Until you know it. And we needed a lot more money in the percentage and we might need more later. So I look forward to that, staying at a minimum of 15%, but not on the ballot in the implementation. But if you go so far as to try to pause the millage and divert it to a general fund, I won't vote for it and I will encourage everyone not to vote for it. To me, that's perverting the intent of the voters that wanted this measure to protect our natural resources, not to fund your budget, not to fix your deficit, not to fix your infrastructure. I think you tried to do that with a half cent sales tax and it failed. So you need to present something stronger to the public for that and not take this money.
Just, just so I can correct you, there's nothing been discussed by this council to divert the money and by pausing it to go somewhere else. This council has not done that, period.
I was present at that meeting and it seemed that it was discussed.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. Pausing it and having a break on the taxes was discussed for one year. We're, we're taking in $15 million a year. So that.
So if you pause it, could you please explain a little better for those of us who don't understand what exactly happens with that extra tax?
We will, we will engage in that conversation, but what was suggested was that we pause, we have four years' worth of funds in the Echo Fund right now. If we funded everything that came to us at the same level, we have enough to fund four years and it'll be 16, 17 million dollars at the end of 2021 with no, no projects there. So why not give the taxpayers a break for one year and the taxes would then begin in 2021?
So our taxes will drop during that period.
Your taxes would drop that percentage, but it wouldn't be used, the taxes wouldn't remain to be used for anything else. That was a combined statements of several things. I just wanted to nip, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad for this, thank you.
But I think that's how things get started. You say it and then everybody else thinks it's the same thing. It's not the case, and we're being very informal today, if you don't mind. And I just, I, I get tired of things coming out in the public that were said and they say, well, everybody knows that because they heard it from you and others. That is not the case.
Well, actually, there's an audio that they heard. So I, I'm going to disagree with your perception of that because my perception was that.
It's reality.
That the funds will not be collected during the pause. And I think they should continue to be collected. The concern.
Let's don't get argumentative, I'll let you finish your time.
The concern was, I know, but it's my time, if you don't mind, I'm almost out of time. The concern was.
I'm going to give you another minute if you need it.
The concern is that those funds won't be collected because it appears you're hoarding the money. You've got money in the bank and it's not being spent. The statement was made, we can't give it away. So for me, that comes to you for policy, right? You've got to make, you've got to make these programs more accessible. You've got to reduce the limitations, you've got to fix the matching problems. That's where the problem, for me, comes in. So why pause it? Why not use the funds that have been given effectively and efficiently and show us that you can manage those funds properly? Why not that? That's my question and that's my final statement. So thank you.
I think all of us would like to take a, huh? And if we, if we lowered everything, everybody out there would want something for nothing. And the reason we have participation and have skin in the game is because people want to have worthwhile projects. Everybody, everybody out here would have a project they wanted if we were going to fund it. Right? 100%.
Mr. Chair.
I'm, I'm sorry that we got engaged, but I have to, I have to nip those things in the bud. And I want to say one more thing on that. It is not up to us to recruit people to have projects. That's not our, that is not our responsibility. I've been told that on Facebook and I'll tell everybody else on Facebook and anywhere, you give us the viable projects and we'll say that they're funded. You do that. It's not up to, it shouldn't be up to us to go out and try to find them. But anyway, Ben, you.
A couple of things. One thing I recall was what we were talking about, the general fund, is the general fund supplementing these, not the other way around. Because this is Echo and Forever monies and that's not to be used to supplement the general fund, but the general fund shouldn't be supplementing them. As for programs, and it might be up to, while this is going on, how do we work on some of these matches so we can stretch it a little bit further? But we don't want to just spend money because we have money. That's the biggest complaint people say in government. You got the money, so you just spend it. We want to make sure it's legitimate projects, going to benefit our community and our visitors, not just spend it because it's there.
Ms. Gertman?
Chair, thank you for clarifying that. At the workshop, I can understand how the public may have interpreted the way that was communicated there by the citizens. So I'm glad to hear you clarify what the understanding or what the intent was because I don't know it came across that way. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. And oftentimes, people's opinions differ from the facts and that's just fine, that's just the way it is. Okay, Kelly McKee?
Um, Ms. Chair.
Oh, I saw your name pop up.
That's okay, I'm not going to let this one pass. So in a workshop, and we alluded to it earlier, it's called the Florida Sunshine Law. In a workshop, this council talks to each other. And sometimes we have ideas and we talk about it. Doesn't mean it's policy, doesn't mean it's law, doesn't mean it's going to happen. The worst thing you can do is try to censor your elected officials and shut them down from having a conversation with ideas or how to go forward, which is apparently what's trying to happen here. And that is the worst form of a representative form of government. We can agree or disagree, but the, but having the opportunity to discuss options and alternatives, what, what is that? If you keep doing the way you've always done, expect different results, is insanity? Well, I'm going to use that word instead of perversion because I find that extremely offensive. I had a conversation with somebody walking in this morning exactly on this and they were concerned about what they have seen on social media too. Because what we have here is checks and balances, we've just talked about that. There's checks and balances, there's implementation language. And should council go off the grid or go rogue? We have a very good legal department up there in the third floor that will pull us in. And there's implementation language and there's resolutions and there are checks and balances. And never once, never once was the conclusion of my comment that it should go to the general fund. That may be wishful thinking. And I'm just going to say this because this is what's really playing out since it's up here and this language is being used, this is political season. And that's what's happening and I apologize for that, but that's the card that's being played. So let's keep it at policy and I for one, want to encourage my electeds and my colleagues, let's keep having this conversation.[1777.25] We're gonna get hit in social media no matter what, but doing the people's business and looking for options, I'm still okay with that, but let's, 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 let's at least for the sake of our community and our citizens going forward, don't twist it. Don't, don't make it more than it is, and try to take a couple sentences and come to a false conclusion that was never said, never intended, and, um, I'll talk more, I am going to address this at the end now, it appears that I have to, so, so I will, I will be doing that, too. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Honorable Members of County Council. I'm Kelly McGee, three seven two Heritage Estates Lane, Deland. Um, I'd like to thank you so much for the positive momentum on Volusia Forever and Echo. We're, this item is Volusia Forever. Um, the workshop was fantastic. Your input, hearing your all's input was, was really helpful. Especially like to thank, um, your county manager, George Reckonwald, interim county attorney, Mike Dyer, and all of your staff for, I mean, this is a Herculean effort to provide all of this, it's a lot of information to digest. Um, so, I obviously support Volusia Forever. I had the conversation with Doug Weaver yesterday, and he, he explained to me the, the value of having the sixty million dollar language on the ballot. Um, and he and I've had many, many conversations of the need for the fifteen percent for maintenance. So, um, what can you do today? Today, you can vote to adopt the resolution before you with the sixty million dollar language and the fifteen percent set aside. Then, once the audit results come back, you could have public workshops. Ask your Echo Advisory Board to have listening sessions so that we can, um, flesh out, what does it mean? What does resilience mean? What are, what do those, you know, what are these items, what do we, what are our, you know, real goals and priority projects? Have those listening sessions after the audit comes back, because there will be a lot of questions. You could have a frequently asked questions page, um, and, and thank you, Ms. Denny's, for asking for those audits, because I think that, you know, the more factual information that we have, the better. So again, um, please, if you can, uh, vote to-
We're not gonna vote today on that, just go ahead and say, and we can stop something else. We cannot do that today, we will not do that today, okay?
Okay, well, very good. Um, but if, if you don't vote today-
We're not.
Then we would ask for your consideration into the Trust for Public Lands support.
If we voted today, we couldn't have them, so we're not voting.
Okay, very good, well, but I support the sixty million, I support the fifteen percent, and thank you.
That's important, that's important, thank you.
It's very important.
Jim DeRoscher. I do appreciate y'all being patient with me and us. We don't normally try to comment, but a lot of times, we have to have feedback because we can't talk to you, uh, during workshops, you don't have a chance, and you don't have a chance to hear us, and that's anything we like, is for us to have feedback. I wish we could just have open discussion, everybody be courteous, raise your hand, we take our time. I wish we could conduct a meeting like that sometime. I think it would be helpful for all of us.
I think they call that a town hall, a hearing in New Hampshire.
No, 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 that's what, I'm, I prefaced it by saying what I would like it to be, but it wouldn't be that in New Hampshire, would it?
So, uh, Jim DeRoscher, five oh four, Cinnamon Circle. Um, I, I commend you for bringing this up and, and having this, uh, discussion today. Um, I, I use these properties, and I hike, bike, and kayak on these properties, and, so I know how vitally important they are. Um, they recharge the aquifer, they purify our air that we breathe, um, this, some species are hanging on because of these properties, because it's the only, the last place that they have. So, um, I'm in favor of the sixty million increase. Um, all that is, is a cost of living increase over the course of the twenty years. The fifteen percent for management, that's, that's a good idea, but I wouldn't complicate the, uh, language on the ballot. Um, I agree with, uh, Deb, that, 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 that's just gonna complicate things. People, um, will just be confused by some of that stuff, but you guys could agree beforehand that you're gonna do it at fifteen percent. Uh, as far as the, uh, five hundred and seventy-five million that we took out of the general fund, um, I think that's a pittance for what the benefit over twenty years has been. If you have a economic, uh, assessment done, you're gonna find that you probably got, uh, ten times that much in the billions in benefit from the ecotourism that's brought to this coun- county. So I used to be an ecotour operator in Brevard County, and I can tell you, it, it, the payback on it is sometimes thirty to one, so, um, I wouldn't worry about twenty years from now if we need to use some general funds to, to cover the cost of these projects. Um, it's well worth the expense. And, and I think we need to get this on the ballot quick, because, uh, the state is preempting everything. Um, if we don't do this quickly, we may not even be able to meet in this hall anymore. There, it's crazy what the state's trying to do to us, so, anyway, I heard you, uh, get it going, and thanks.
Okay, it can't go on the ballot till November third, just so everyone knows. It can't, okay, it cannot go, and the five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars was one year, not total. The five hundred and seventy-six thousand is per year. How many years on it, Ryan?
The five hundred and seventy thousand dollar, not five hundred and seventy million, five hundred and seventy thousand was the general fund expenditure on land management for fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Right.
Which includes Forever and any properties that we had before Forever.
Right, and, and the total so far out of the general fund has been how much?
There, there has been land management before the Forever program, so we don't have the, the total on that. I can, I can work on something.
I know, I asked, I asked that ten days ago, I didn't get that in, but anyway, that's... Pegine Hanrahan, Hanran, Hanran, I'm guessing. I'm going P-E-G, oh, there you are. Is it Pegine correctly?
Yes.
Wow, I got one.
Thank you, Chair Kelly, that was an excellent job at a difficult name. My name is Pegine Hanrahan, and I work for the Trust for Public Land. Uh, Honorable Members of Council, you have everything you need here to be successful. Uh, you have the oldest, and I think one of the most distinguished, land conservation programs in the state of Florida. You have extraordinary staff. I told Mr. Reckonwald this morning, I don't think, uh, in eighteen years of working for local government, and fifteen years of working for the Trust for Public Land, serving local government, I don't think I've ever had a situation where I was, y'all were so far out ahead of us that we were rushing to try to keep up. So your staff is extremely professional. I spoke with Ms. Adair this morning, and she is on it as well, and maybe most importantly, and I've watched your two prior meetings where you've discussed this this year, you have a community here of, of conservation leaders and business leaders and community leaders, and I'm sure faith and government leaders as well, who are gonna carry you through, uh, all the way to Election Day. Uh, what I really would encourage you to do, however, uh, as we did, uh, Chair Kelly, you may recall in Ormond Beach when we worked with you on, uh, Beachfront Park, Andy Romano Park now, uh, and, uh, I worked with Nancy Maddox, who's here in, uh, New Smyrna as well, just last November, uh, at Turnbull Creek Preserve, I managed that campaign with New Smyrna. We always encourage you, as you've done this morning, to really talk very conceptually about what you're going to do. That's, you've had an extremely robust and thoughtful conversation this morning. Then you allow your staff, your attorney's office, your finance office, your administrator, obviously, your Echo and Volusia Forever staff, and your citizen advisory committees, and any other, you know, individuals, who, nonprofits, uh, the, uh, Ms. McGee's organization and others, to, to come forward, provide this input, and then we do some research. Um, I know this sounds like a lot of steps, but we can do it pretty quickly. I've worked on, I think, twenty-two different local ballot measure campaigns, and it, it gets to be kind of a routine. What I really need to do this today, though, from you, and I emailed it to you several weeks ago, I think Mr. Reckonwald has reviewed, approved, and was poised to sign himself, but we need Chair Kelly to sign, and we need y'all to agree, that you are asking for our technical assistance. Without that letter, I'm in a position of lobbying you, and our grant resource funds, which in this case come from Doris Duke Charitable Foundation, cannot be used to lobby. Uh, and once it goes to the ballot, that's lobbying, the people we're lobbying then are the voters and not you, but so we need you to just be in concept today, approve a technical assistance letter, we will provide you all this research, work with your staff, and bring you a clean recommendation back as soon as you need it, well before August.
Right.
Thank you, Chair.
And the Bellmead property.
Yes, yes, exactly.
I was there for that one, too.
Yeah, exactly, yes. And I, I have, uh, our process and a little sheet in my business cards, I'll just leave this for the clerk to pass around to you, sir.
Thank you, and your help in, in the two projects that I was involved in was invaluable. Uh, and Clay, you remember, at least, probably both of those, at some point, some way. Okay, that is all of you that wanted to fight the, uh, crowd and speak to us. We still have a lot of work to do, um, council. Do you want to try to look at the, um, and, and just one point, it's, now, I'll leave that for my closing comment, or closing of this part, on the excess funds, uh, as you've done. Let's go to, look, look at the, here's something that we hadn't thought about, it hadn't been brought up at any point in time. Do you want to stay with the same millage that raises currently roughly seven and a half million dollars? Do you want to stay with that same millage? Okay, I'm just, we never, we never was discussed that. Uh, that millage was never discussed, because when the millage was put into effect in two thousand, it raised, Ryan, did you ever get that number for me? The first year? I know it's there, I couldn't dis- I couldn't decipher that chart. It was too small. And we tried to read it on iPhone, it's even smaller.
It looks like the first year's tax levy was two point six million.
Okay, pardon?
Two point six million.
That's what I thought. Melissa Lammers, I'm sorry, I did not call you, I knew you were here, I apologize. I looked at your name, and then I put your card right on top.
It's okay, I'm not taking it personally. Thank you, Chair Kelly, and thank you, Honorable Council Members and Manager Reckonwald. The first time I came in here to talk about Volusia Forever, I talked about how the, uh, set aside lands would only become more important as well as Echo, although I'm addressing Volusia Forever now, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Environmental Council. First, we very much appreciate how rapidly you moved to have a workshop, and we appreciate the complexity of our Sunshine Law and discussing and airing different points of view publicly. That is so important to our civic life, and it is so important for you to have our input. Thank you for standing up for that, always. Um, Volusia Forever has been a phenomenal program by tying it to a bond issue. The monies can only be used for the stated purpose that is contained in the ballot language. I'll look at, uh, Attorney Dyer to reconfirm that if he would like to. So it's one of the things that gives us great trust, uh, as citizens in Volusia Forever because of the way that it is set up. That said, uh, the sixty million, as others have said before us, as long as you're taking input, the sixty million makes perfect sense. It is just a CPI increase, um, and also, we heard overwhelmingly that fifteen percent, that ten percent is not enough for maintenance and stewardship in perpetuity, as is the purpose of this program, so certainly further conversation around the set aside amount is warranted. And finally, I think it's important to say that we all want success. The council wants success, and we, the people, want to be successful in this. Um, so, listening sessions are extraordinarily important, and if you are not voting today, then I too would urge that you, uh, seriously consider today the technical assistance letter from the TPL. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that filled their card out that I may have shuffled? Well, come on down.
Hello, council, good morning, my name is Suzie, peace like peace sign.
And Suzie, you didn't fill the card out.
I did, I handed it in.
You're for six.
Okay, could I wave that and just speak now, since I'm up here?
No, yes, you can.
Uh, one five seven one Allenson Drive, Deland, and I was just gonna say, this is Super Tuesday, so why aren't you voting on this right now?
Because we would, first of all, we would lose the Trust for Public Lands as one, and we have a council member here that's not here today, and it could end depending, we may not, but we couldn't, and also, it's the birthday of the state of Florida, for those of you who didn't know.
Oh, that's right, March thirteenth, eighteen forty-five, right? Eighteen forty-five. Um, okay, well, anyway, I wanted to say that, following Melissa's, uh, words, and that is that you have, you're, you're out here discussing this off the cuff, and, uh, we, we all need to appreciate the fact that you're, this is your time to discuss it, and we need to, to, uh, listen to your opinions, and we definitely value that. Thank you very much for, um, all the, um, initiatives towards this measure, and I agree with the sixty percent and the fifteen percent.
Sixty million.
Sixty million and fifteen percent, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, man, you had a-
Yeah, just one more thing, and this is not for ballot resolution, but it's more for the people who are putting together suggestions for us, and understand the Forever Board was disbanded, that has to be put back in again, and, and I think we should have in the resolutions that it can only be disbanded by this board, nobody else, because of-
By what board?
The council.
Okay.
Yeah, I think before it was disbanded, it wasn't a council approval, I don't believe, but that has to be council approval with it's ever disbanded.
It, it was a action by council in two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, it was disbanded by the council.
It was, okay.
Well, and, and the, the context was that the, uh, program monies had been, uh, basically dedicated or approved, so that-
Yes, but we still need to keep it no matter what. I mean, it shouldn't be disbanded because there's been other things that came up, even if they're somewhat, um, not doing it, we still need to have a board that we can call on no matter what.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Weaver.
Where do we go from here now?
Right now, what we can do is, we can go to the question one that has to be established, and have that set aside, that the bonding question can be sixty million, if everyone's agrees on that.
Yes, agreed.
So that would be something, Michael, that you could work toward bringing back to us, we have consensus on that one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the next, the next one was the wording on the second one, uh, was the-
Resiliency.
Resiliency.
Mr. Chair, couldn't that all be done in implementation?
So, Mr. Chair, and I, I, I know I said this before, but just for the benefit of the public as well, decision points two and three, um, the language that is being, uh, proposed you to consider was based on feedback you received from the Forever Group. It would not be in the ballot language.
Right.
Uh, so, it, um-
The sixty million would.
It, yes, sir, it would.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But the other part would not be, the resiliency part would not be?
That, that's correct, and so, now, the reason-
And the maintenance would not be.
That, that's correct, it could be in those resolutions.
It will, it will pass five to one, but that's okay, we bring it back.
So, the resolution calling for the election twenty years ago actually had quite a bit of information outside the ballot language, and, not, not that that was incorrect, but it was stating what the purpose of the program was, established program goals, which have been revised or expanded upon by council through resolutions after two thousand. So this, the question of, uh, resiliency, sustainability, uh, you, if you did want that in this original resolution, it could be changed later, or you could take no action on that, uh, today, and it could be added if the, uh, measure were adopted at a later time.
Okay, well, let's, let's take no action or no direction on this part right now, on the second one, on the resiliency forever. Let's take no, no feed, nothing to, to come back to us, that could come back for further discussion on that part, right, or not?
It could, it could.
It does not have to be on the ballot question.
It does not, and so, the original resolution from twenty years ago did state a series of acquisition goals for Forever, uh, which is on, beginning on the next slide here, you can see, Megan.
Let's see, and by not putting that this time, makes me fear the same thing we had on the half-cent sales tax, where objectives and things that we wanted to achieve were not defined definitively.
So, question is, it, it's a, you know, legislative decision by council, do you feel that, uh, your acquisition goals in the resolution, even though it's outside the ballot language, and it could be changed by council in the future, uh, should it be in this original resolution calling for the election?
I just wanted to comment, I don't compare it to half-cent sales tax, because this is a tested, proven, ten-year, twenty-year program that people are aware of, of what we've done, and there's good, uh, good, good spirit toward it and so forth. Uh, I'm just for not adding anything on it that we don't have to add. Uh, with the forty to sixty, we're not really adding anything, we're tweaking that, but we start adding these other things, I think we, we could get, uh, we could hamstring ourself. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's why we're, we're only, the only thing we're gonna do is send direction back at this point, that we're, we're, the language will be the sixty million dollar- direction back at this point that we, the language will be the 60 million dollar bond, which would be inserted where the 40 million dollar was there. But he mentioned that there was other language, Fred, that said what it was for that will come out. So you want that out, council? You want all the language out other than that?
No, I mean, what I understood with council by consensus was that they did not, uh, they were not directing the addition of the resiliency language into this resolution, that you would stick with the original acquisition goals of the program, at least for the purposes of this initial resolution.
Okay.
Okay?
And the direction is that it would come back without maintenance, set asides.
And that would be your third decision at that point.
Which, right now, I just see that as being so transparent and I, we, I'm as transparent as they can be. And I just think that, because one of the questions that we always look at when we do something, who's going to maintain it? We did that with Andy Romano Beachfront Park. We passed, we taxed ourselves in Norman to, to help fund it with the program, with the Echo program and with the, uh, the county. And we said, we're going to have to maintain it and the, the city agreed to maintain it.
Sure. So that, that actually takes us to slide 17, Megan.
... Please try again in a moment.
I don't have that person that does those things. Although, my family is safe, but they were hit and around them. Uh, my nephew's school, where he went to school and his son goes to school, totally destroyed by tornado last night. And just a few miles from there, a car was put through the third floor of an apartment complex, so, but my son and sister and brother's property is safe. But I've been a little edgy getting, I'm getting texts from them saying, we're okay, we're not okay, this happened, so...
That's all right, you still got to get donuts.
Yeah. So, that's, that's where we are. Billy?
So again, we're just now instructing you to do the implementation of, of this resolution with the 60 million, correct?
That's almost definitive.
Not, not the implement, and then the other two items for the resiliency and the 15% we can look at that at implementation.
Let's take those individually. I think we take the resiliency one totally out. That's what we're suggesting.
That's, yeah, that's...
All right, that comes out. I would still like to have further discussion as far as to put in, and, and when it comes back, it will come back if it's not in there or if it's in there and y'all vote to not have it in there, I've lost a discussion, but that's okay. I've lost before. I'll live to fight another day. So, that one, you're saying leave it out. Barbara's saying leave the 15% maintenance for property out.
Leave it out. Thank you.
I'm for leave it out.
Ben?
Leave it out because we can have it more flexible. As long as we can do it, I'm good.
Well, somebody can do it down the road. Maybe.
We're going to...
I won't be here.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, based on the direction, we'll bring back to you for a subsequent agenda item, an updated resolution calling for the election.
I would say maybe the first meeting in April or something. George?
Yeah, I think that's a, a good goal would be the first meeting in April. And I would like to just, I'll take the opportunity, I, I, at the last meeting you did direct me and I did send a letter to the director of, to the Trust for Public Lands, uh, it, it does require you, the chair, sir. So what I'd like to do is I have the letter here, I'll just ask council permission to send it again with your signature on there.
Counsel, okay with that?
Yes, absolutely. We need to get that out.
And that, and that, the result of that will be what?
That they will assist us in moving forward. Everything they have available to move everything forward.
Yeah, they can be part of the, any kind of research that we may need, uh, maybe like what best practices might be, uh, maybe some polling that they could do, but, but they can do work for us under the scenario, uh, up until the time that you guys actually vote to put it on the, on the ballot.
Yeah, they're, they're tentacles of that group as far reaching more than a thicket octopus.
Okay.
Everywhere.
If we can use them only until we both put it on the ballot, if we're going to utilize them, then we bring this back at a later time other than, than, um...
Well, I'll talk with them as far as what the date, it may be the second meeting in April, but, uh, but they know that there is a tight timeframe and I know they don't, they don't want us to lose the momentum that we have as well.
I, I think that you may be confusing the timeline on that. I think that once we contract, at some point in time, the ballot language could be developed up to, I mean, it...
Well, we can find out.
I mean, we would like to have the services of the Trust for Public Lands.
Yeah, and Chair Kelly again.
It doesn't stop, it doesn't stop just because we agree to put it on.
That's correct. Um, what I really need today is just the letter, which I think you've by consent essentially agreed to. Um, once that is done, we can use grant funding to do the research, which would include a robust public opinion poll. It would also include obviously working with your staff and with citizens that are interested. Um, I believe we can probably do that by the second week in April. It's going to be tight, but I agree that you have so much energy and enthusiasm that you don't want to delay too much. My only hesitation is if, heaven forbid, the audit came back and it created a whole new public dialogue that might have the potential to change because it's, we're only, you know, poll is only ever a snapshot in time. But, but that's the only sort of timing thing. I will tell you, I mean, we're working currently in Nassau, Manatee, Collier and Indian River. Nassau and Collier have already adopted their ballot language. Indian River only approved the TA letter last week, so they're not even probably exactly where you are, y'all are ahead of them. Um, Manatee, we're in the field shortly with the polling. So, and the most extreme example I shared with someone this morning is in Brevard County in 2016, the county commission chair didn't even call us until June and we got it adopted by that August date and it went to the ballot for the Indian River Lagoon half cent sales tax and it passed. So it can be done, but I think that as you've heard from your citizens and as I think you're all eager, the sooner we can get it forward. We can continue to work with your citizens after that point, but it would more likely be in raising private dollars to communicate to the public. Normally, the county does not do that. You can educate, not, not advocate, but usually county governments just allow that to be a private sector thing. If people want it, they'll go out and raise private dollars to do it. We're happy to help them do that, but we would not be doing that on behalf of county government, if that makes sense.
You brought up an interesting point that I thought about. Uh, when do we expect to have the, uh, back from the internal auditor on the...
That'll be in mid-May.
Okay, and, and I know that people are pushing, I think we've essentially agreed that we want to go forward, okay? To say that you have the language of it, that's going to be on the November 3rd ballot, to have it in April or May, I don't see the big difference. But, uh, especially if it's going to jeopardize something or something, I don't foresee anything coming out of the, the audit whatsoever. Uh, we would have that mid-May. We've got till August before the final thing has to be done. The legislature finishes next week, right? They're not going to adopt anything else, someone threw that out, but I mean, I, I dismiss that statement because it, they don't have time to do anything else to, to stifle us, we don't think. Uh, so I don't see the rush to bring back a final, final. You could bring back something for another discussion in April that we could agree to either move forward the language or not, or wait till the, uh, the audit.
That's true, but I, I believe if we keep the ballot language...
The way it is.
The, you know, pretty much the way it is and very general and conceptual, as was said, uh, I think most of the other questions, you, you've got even longer than that because that would be an, an implementation, should it pass? I, I do think having information about what our intent is, uh, would be helpful for, for people to make a decision, but our intent is to keep it pretty close to the same with a few, uh, you know, changes possibly in the maintenance and a few other areas that are, that are needed and I think pretty understandable. So, the, you know, if you're keeping the ballot language broad, uh, then really some of the questions that are out there, uh, really, whether they're answered or not, they're not going to affect that language because it's very broad. So my advice, I think that, you know, it's a balance between that and the momentum. I, I do think April would be good, uh, if we could get it decided. If you wanted to wait till the audit, you'd be going into May, uh, but I'm pretty confident there's nothing coming out of that that's going to, you know, you can always pull back if you decided there was something in there that was wrong, but I, I, I'd be very stunned if there was.
Okay, Ben?
We got to remember, this is our sales team out here, and they got to realize that they don't have to sell us, that we're there. And so the quicker we get that done, quicker we can quit being lobbied and we can start all going the other direction on it. And I think that's very important. So like George says, we get the ballot question out there, we can always revise if we run into many, any great issues, I do believe, but let's get it moving so that we can head in one direction. This is on both these, Echo and...
So the second week in April is okay with you, first or second week in April?
Absolutely.
Ms. Gorman? And not necessarily for that, but you're...
Right. To me, this effort is for the people and by the people and the reason to get it done in April is to give them an opportunity to reach out within the community. And if we don't put it out there and they don't know that we're behind it and we're solid about getting it on the ballot, they're going to be delayed. So there has to be in time and opportunity for them to educate the public about the concern and about the support for it. So I think we've, we can't delay it.
Okay. Ms. Wheeler?
Yes, I agree with Ben and Barbara on that. Uh, I think we need to get the ballot language...
So April, April we'll bring it back. I just trying to, we got to do some final things, so we got to move on. Okay, April will, it'll come back in April, George?
That'll work.
Yes.
Anything else?
Heck, no.
Thank you. And we can beat this horse all the way along, but we're not going to. We're going to, we're going to move forward. We got other horses to ride on the next one on six. You have your, you have your walking papers, Michael and George, on that one?
Yes, sir.
We'll move to item six, which is Echo. And you have another stack of envelope, another card. I see Fred pulled, filled the card out, Ms. Pete, Ms. Peace. Yeah, George, you want to, uh, who's going to handle the Echo?
Michael is going to go ahead and, and handle it. It's the same setup basically. We've, um, we got a little bit of history and then there's some decision points.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council, um, next slide. So like Forever, uh, uh, many of the facts are the same, so, um, I won't repeat them. But this program was approved by the voters in November of 2000 as well and it's set up as a grant program, uh, for the, uh, to finance the acquisition, restoration, construction and improvement of facilities for environmental, cultural or outdoor recreation purposes and also has a, uh, open public use, uh, concept. It was, uh, council in 2000 directed the, uh, that the resolution be, uh, ballot question be put on the ballot. Uh, you also had, uh, created, uh, through that resolution, an Echo advisory committee that was advisory to this council and continues to this day to review, uh, proposed applica, uh, applications for grants and making recommendations to you. Um, and since the beginning of the program, more than 200 grants and aid have been awarded, uh, by this council after review by your Echo advisory committee. Uh, the program is funded, um, next slide, with tax, ad form taxes not exceeding one fifth of a mill, also for 20, 20-year period. The last levy will be in November of 2020 and the program, uh, today, the way it has been implemented, uh, requires at least a 50% fund match. The process is the same for Echo. It starts with the council ordering the election by resolution. The same timeline that we're dealing with, the absolute latest supervisor of elections has advised us is adopting, being, uh, resolution being adopted by this council on August 4th. Um, the council can adopt the attached resolution, which is modeled on what was adopted 20 years ago or based on four decision points we'd like to walk through with you today, uh, could be revised. So that brings us on the next slide to the first decision point, which is the, uh, question of the ceiling of the bonding amount as well. And, um, the, what's important here, I think, to point out, uh, the Echo program never utilized bonding, uh, when it was adopted unlike Forever. So, um, although it has to be addressed in the ballot question, so we're asking for your direction on that, if you were to leave that unchanged, it would have a, a cap of $40 million. And does not have to be utilized, but it, it could if you had, if you so...
Okay, you've been given direction, Ms. Gorman, to leave it.
Okay.
Okay, move on. We're getting low hanging fruit now.
All right.
We're, it's gone, it's picked.
All right. Second decision point, uh, this is not a question for the ballot, uh, however, it was in the original resolution calling for the election 20 years ago, uh, which required the council to implement the program by subsequent resolutions in certain subject areas. And one of those subject area was a grant requirement. That original resolution was rather specific on this point and required a match of at least 50% uh, to be in place. That has been defined, uh, through, and what a match would mean by subsequent resolution. So one question that based on feedback from your Echo committee was whether or not to consider flexibility, uh, in this resolution on the grant. And we've given you an example what that could look at at the bottom of this slide. Um, and there's no right or wrong answer to this, but, uh, you could remove the 50% language and just say that a match will be required and council would determine what that would be through implementation or leave it as is.
Ben?
I think we need to look at this one a little bit because a lot of your not-for-profits just don't have it and there's maybe some very, very good programs that we're missing. We got to have in the words of our chair, skin in the game, but I think we can probably, do we want to take and say preferred 50 and maybe give it down to say 30 or something, but enough where they have something in the game, but we can still pick up some of these good projects and they'd have to be approved by the board and by us before, you know, before we would take it.
Ms. Dennis?
I, I agree with Councilman Johnson. What I have seen though in years past, some grants come through Echo that didn't get approved because I think one, uh, where's our Echo advisory board members? Um, I think you have to be a nonprofit for at least two years, that's one of the criteria, uh, for, for an application process. So we, we, there's some other checks and balances in the application process that I think is good because the last thing we want is just, you know, you relax all of this and, and somebody says, we've got the millions of dollars sitting there, I'm going to form a nonprofit and boom, you know, here, here we go. So we have to be, exercise due diligence along with this. But I would agree with you that I think we should be flexible, Councilman Johnson. I think that's a really good word. I don't know what that looks like at the end, but again, this is something we can come to a conclusion after discussion and implementation, correct? So I would be, I would definitely, I want to be open to this with a match, and then defining what match is. So I think there's some flexibility with a percent and with the definition of match that some organizations can utilize that will, uh, help with that application process for them.
Ms. Gorman?
Yes, I, I'd like to see the same and I'd like to see some of the, um, the smaller applications or smaller 501(c)(3)'s that have applied and what has been the barrier for them and work with the committee to get a better understanding is how we can help them, you know, maybe partner with other private public partnerships to get some of their projects through. to get some of their projects through. Because I was kind of disappointed when I went with Echo out, you know, for the new projects. And most of them were city projects and not nonprofits, small nonprofits that I'm sure really need the support as well for some of the smaller projects. So definitely would like to see us be able to make that difference deeper into the community.
That was going to be my comment also, to make it more readily available for those smaller groups. Uh, and then would the board then make that decision as to the percentage if we come up? Or is that...
Well, what, um, it would be a decision by council through resolution. What the language that could, the adjustment that could be made to this resolution is before you. And it would be striking the 50% requirement, but keeping a match requirement. What that match threshold would be.
Flexible.
And how it would apply to different projects or groups you could define subsequent resolutions, so...
Okay.
Well, you're going down a slippery slope. We hear this from people all the time. I saw it happen with TPO. I know, but I'm gonna beat you to this one. In 2000, 2008, on transportation planning organization, it was required a match of up to 50%, I believe at the time, maybe 2007. It's now 10%. Project after project after project after project. A lot of them not essential because they don't want to put the money into it. And that's exactly what you're gonna happen. You want to spend $16 million, give it away for free. So, I mean, and if you don't limit it to people putting something in there, and I, I don't know that we've had any small nonprofits approach us, Ms. Gertman, maybe you've seen them. I, I haven't seen them that have said they couldn't, that they wanted some to participate.
I'm certainly aware of, of several of them. Um, or those that wouldn't even come because of the criteria. So, um, it's, it's the people's money, it's the people asking for this service. And there's so many resources within our community that need this anchor. So, um, I don't think it's like a road project. I think redevelopment within our community is different than building the infrastructure. So, or through the TPO. So I, I just think that, um, it's a different projects and you can't compare, you know, apples and oranges. Because it's not the same.
I, I, I would respectfully disagree, but let me add this. If we're gonna give it away, if with reduced amount, then we're gonna have to reduce the amount, the limit, the top end of it. And we can't give $400,000, which is the top end, with a $5,000 contribution.
It, it has to be equitable. I mean, I, I just don't even think that that's reasonable to consider.
But, but I'm saying...
You would consider giving $100,000 to somebody that had no skin in the game. I don't, we're talking small community projects and it has to be equitable to what the need is and what their opportunity is to contribute.
And I'll, I'll say this one more thing. It seems like those of you, and I'm not being mean or anything, but those of you on this council wanted the other one to be exactly the same, but this one you want to change to see what you want. Just saying.
You're, you're not talking apples and...
Just saying, I mean, I'm just laying it out there. You want to change this one where the 50% is not in there.
You're not talking apples and apples, and I think we could have a minimum on this thing. You know, when you come to land...
Yeah, yeah, wait a minute, Ben, you missed what I said. The previous, on the, on the Volusia Forever, you wanted the language the same. Well, now you want to modify the language.
Yes, and you didn't give me a chance to explain myself, Mr. Chair.
But there's no difference.
Yes, it is different. This is absolutely different. We're not talking apples and apples. When you're talking about land acquisitions, normally you're going with state, St. John's Water Management. You're going with people that absolutely have the money. Now, I'm not saying a giveaway program because you gotta have skin in the game. But if, when you take some of these groups and you say you're doing a $100,000 project, that's a great project, they may not have $50,000, but you still leave skin in it. And like I said earlier, 30% maybe. But it's all on a case-by-case basis, normally 50. But you take and you evaluate it out through the Echo Board. They come to us and we look at it and decide, is this project worthwhile? Are they putting enough into it? What can they afford? And it may have to bring, you know, they need to bring us their net worth statements, et cetera. And we're not, it's not like we're looking at these weekly. There's just not that many projects coming through that we can't, our staff can't do due diligence and come to us and say, this is good, this isn't, and we look it over. But we have to take and look after some of our smaller groups that we can help them get through some of these good projects that, you know, not a giveaway.
I don't disagree with that. All I'm saying is, you want to change the language on this one. You want the, one of the previous language the same. I don't, I mean, I'm not saying that, and that's a fact.
That's correct, that's correct.
You want to change it, that's what I said, okay? I'm not saying that there shouldn't be something to change. I'm not saying I'm against changing it.
Okay.
I'm just saying what I said was correct.
Okay, to say, we can put in a minimum.
For us to sit here and establish what that match is gonna be, if you don't want to, if you want to just say a match, I'll argue when I'm right till it freezes over, and I was right on that one. All I said was, you want to change the language this time. You didn't want to change the language in the other one. This time you want to, well, it passed before by 61%. Why would you want to temper with it? That's what you said on the other one.
Mr. Chair, may I?
You're up, yes.
Thank you. Without interruption?
No, I won't get to that.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I think this does need to be reevaluated for some of the smaller 501(c)(3)'s. You know, they're not going to be able to come up with that 50%. Maybe the cities can, the larger cities can, but Oak Hill and those, maybe they can't. So I, I do think we do need to, and, and one of your comments when we went through the workshop was the amount that we have in there right now. And part of that amount was brought over from the boardwalk. So it's not like it's just been an accumula, it, it was put back in from the boardwalk. And, um, so we want this to be used. We definitely want skin in the game. I am not giving it free. So we're, I, I'm definitely for keeping skin in the game. But we, we want to make it avail, more readily available for those people who are needing it. So I think that part needs to be reevaluated. I'm not saying no skin in the game.
Okay, but, and to, to re-clarify, the boardwalk was a holding name to hold the funds because they had to go somewhere. There was no project, it was a holding fund that was, was sitting there. It could have been just set in empty Echo funds, but it would have looked pretty large. So it was put in that fund as a holding. So it's not like they came back from there. They technically came back from a named project that was not really a project. But, I mean, the, I, I'm still gonna, I would like to have some, and we don't have time. I would like to have some specifics of some people that have projects that they would like to have. I would like, I mean, surely there have been people that have approached Echo or inquired about Echo over the years that said they would like to do something, but they don't have the money. And I, I still think that if we're gonna do that, if we're gonna limit the amount, and right now the currently the amount is $400,000 per year, correct, Mike, Ryan? Right?
Yes, uh, and that was done by a, implementing resolution of council.
After the fact?
Yes.
You said that was done in 2012? No.
It, that actually has changed over time. Um, but it, uh, it was done after the election.
So it was not in the, and it was not part of the question?
The, the...
50% match was not?
No, the 50% match was the cap on what the grant was enacted later, so...
That's what I thought.
Yes, sir.
So, the $400,000 was the amount that was done by resolution. The 50% match had to be in the, it was part of the resolution, the question?
It was not part of the ballot question, but it was in the original resolution. So in practice, uh, it could have been changed by council at a later date because it wasn't part of the ballot question. But it was, uh, so this decision point two, um...
I've got you.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Denny's?
Okay, so, we're, maybe here, here, here's a frustration thing, frustrating thing. So we're talking about, let's talk about just ballot language. Let's just talk ballot language because I think what you're hearing from council is we want to deal with the implementation language and the resolution for more input from the public and then after we go through some processes. So, Mr. Dyer, go back to the ballot language. We're getting into the weeds in this and we're, we're, we're struggling with an issue that we don't have to define today. So do the, does the ballot language include a match?
It does not.
Okay, that's the, that's, okay, we're gonna move on. So...
I would love the impression that did.
I know, so was I, Mr. Chair. It wasn't until Mr. Dyer just made that comment. And I think that's where council should have been advised very genuinely at the beginning. So if, 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 if we're gonna take the position like we just did on Volusia Forever and just try to streamline the ballot language, Mr. Dyer, put what the ballot language looks like for Echo without all these changes. What does it, what does it current, what pass? Where's the language?
If you could, Megan, move to slide 10. And while, while that's being put up, just to clarify, the resolution that's attached is modeled on what council originally adopted calling for the election 20 years ago, which did include 50% match.
No, I want, I don't, I'm talking about what passed.
But it was not in the ballot language, so...
I, I want the, I want the ballot language, the pass. Not what was talked about 20 years ago, not the workshop, what pass. That's what we're, that's our foundation. That's what we're working from.
What would be this right here?
Is it?
It's a...
Is it my page number 10 here in my PowerPoint?
Yes, it's slide 10.
Let's, let's, let's go to the, okay, um...
If you, in the resolution that's in your agenda, it's on page 6-5.
Not 6-4?
Mine's got a different number, too. I got number 10, but there you go. Okay, so here's the ballot language, the pass.
Okay, and so the only difference was, because this was at a future decision point, the word "operation" was not in there. Because that was, but that is the original, that's the ballot language that would extend it for an additional 20-year period. And it did not reference match.
Okay. So for the sake of a plumb line, if you will, and everything going forward, I still support the original ballot language. I don't see, I'd like to hear what council, Mr. Johnson, what the rest of my colleagues think and work out some of these other issues like we talked about with Volusia Forever. After we get input from our citizens and our advisory boards and listening sessions and however this transparency with our citizens is going to occur at that point. But at this point, I, I want to go forward with the original implementation language. Okay.
I agree.
Dr. Lowery? Yeah, I just wanted to ask, you have the four decision points, but none of those deal with the original ballot language.
Correct. Just the first one, which was the ba, uh, the bond amount.
Okay, bond amount, which we're in basically the same position we were with...
Yes.
Uh, Volusia Forever. If we were to change that, if we wanted to, or leave it alone, whatever we decide to do, it seems like the consensus is leave it alone, then we can completely leave everything alone in the ballot language.
And one of the other, and decision point four would address, that we haven't gotten there yet, a ballot language change on the question of, do you allow for operating funds? But I do, following Ms. Denny's request, this is the original ballot language that was approved 20 years ago.
Ms. Gertman?
Yes, I support the original ballot language and would like to have that discussion around the operations.
And, and we've already established that we didn't want to exceed the 40 million, right?
Right.
So what we've said is that that's what we would like to have as the ballot language. I think we can end this discussion quickly on this one. Except we have some people who want to tell us that they may not want it. Uh, we're all in agreement? This is what we want to do? This time we put the cart before the horse, but we're gonna listen to the horses.
All right, so...
Those of you who still want to...
Mr. Chair, do, do you want to finish going through the decision points three or four? Because four would change the ballot language. But I'm hearing you don't want to change the ballot language, so resolved. Now that, just to clarify, the fourth decision point was a question on operations, which I'm, I think I'm hearing from the council that I don't think there's an interest in changing that.
Go ahead and cover four real quick, I mean, not real quick.
And this came from your Echo working group to consider, uh, right now, Echo language is not allowed to be used for operations. Because this was a comment that came from your Echo Board, we brought it before you for direction. If you did want, uh, operating expenses of grantees to be considered, that would have to be changed in the ballot language on the next slide. It would, and that's what I had up before, uh, you would have to insert that in the language. If you did not, it would be the same ballot language as last time.
Mr. Chair, that can't, can that not...
But just a minute, can that not, that can't be done in implementation?
Yes, sir, that would have to be decided at the time.
On the ballot, huh? Pardon? Yes, sir.
It would have to be on the ballot.
That's what I thought. Ms. Gertman?
I'd like to hear from the advisory that made that recommendation and, and better understand what they were seeing that made them, you know, make the recommendation to add operations.
Well, here's what I would say. Some of these small 501(c)(3)'s that are struggling as well to operate and maintain might need that as well. Some of the parks and so forth that, that we have created that require maintenance, that we maintain. Um, same thing, trails, we have some Echo trails, is that correct? I think...
That's correct.
Don't we miss Trail? Mother Trail? Mama Trail? Trail Queen. So I think that's why it was put in there was that, that we do realize that there's gonna need to be maintenance. And Mr. Johnson brought it up at the workshop, that some of these things that we've created, some of these trails are gonna require maintenance over the next 10 years or so.
So we're calling maintenance operations? It's the same?
No, it would be separate. Maintenance was the third decision point. Um, and right now that is not being used, uh, used for Echo funds, but the ballot language would have allowed for it. Could have been implemented that way by council. Operations...
That's the clarity that we'll, that we'll need, so...
Let's do this, let's hear from the people on, you know where we are as far as the ballot language at this point. We have one sticky wicket, as they say in England, which is this one. Should we include that in there?
Yes, sir.
And move, move forward. Jane Andrews, Jane, I know you're here, I saw you, there you are. And if you would be as brief, and I will not interrupt a single one of you this time unless you tell me that we're gonna switch money from something.
Jane, excuse me, Jane Andrews, 183 South US Highway 1 in Oak Hill. To reiterate my commission this morning, good morning, everyone. Um, to reiterate my commission this morning, we're very thankful for Volusia Echo in, in Oak Hill and also Volusia Forever. I just wanted to clarify that this particular voter understands that funds non-collected from Echo authority for a year would have zero effect on the general fund to alleviate a tough budget year. While also hoarding and having a surplus in Echo is not my conclusion. And a vote to pause Echo millage for a year, in my particular case, I have two properties. I pay several thousand dollars in taxes in a year. And Volusia Forever costs me $24 and Volusia Echo costs me $24. That's a total of $48, which happens to be less than one trip to Disney. And when you get to Disney, you go, still have to pay $25 to the park. And I can go to every park in Volusia County and enjoy them all day long and don't have to pay anything else. So, um, this particular voter would not be impressed by a pause in that particular authority. Um, with regard to these Echo grant qualifications, I agree we need to do some tweaking. Um, and as a member of the Florida Native Plant Society, I am truly embarrassed to drive down the rubber front and main roads in my town of Oak Hill and in New Smyrna Beach and see Brazilian peppers sitting there and not being at all addressed or removed. It's a category one invasive plant on the Florida Pest Council, NDEP. It's a bad, bad boy, we gotta get rid of it. And bottom line, I've got 2.68 acres, I've been working for 20 years to remove invasives. And if it's not done on the municipal portions of my city, I'm fighting an impossible battle. So there are little projects that really can be... really can be utilized here to make our, to make everything work perfectly. I mean, we've got to, we've got to address the invasives, and I think that Echo could be a good place for that. So, thank you so much for all the momentum, and I'll let you go with 18 seconds.
Fred?
See, he filled out a card. I know. You said you've got one in here, too. Fred Peace, 1971, Allenson Drive, Deland, Florida. Also known as husband of Suzie.
That's a good one to have, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm, I'm here to offer a peace offering. When I get home, I'll hear it. Happy Super Tuesday and all those things. Happy birthday to Florida, on and on. As a representative of, and I'm not here as an official representative of some smaller 501(c)(3) groups, yes, when I looked at the applications and looked at what was required to do it, just didn't even consider coming forward to ask. But we do need an ask. We do need support. And it would be nice to set these programs up that they were tiered for those that are the, the neeces that have and have all the monies and the neeces that don't, be at a different tier, whether you're two tiers or three tiers. And that other tier takes on and through the recommendation of your wise advisory boards that you have onboard. I've been real impressed with all your workshops, with all your inputs, with all the different organizations. Obviously, we can do great things, but to keep it short, if you could consider a multi-tiered approach, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Fred. Pat? Or the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I've served on the Echo Board as a, Councilmember Lowery's appointment, and it's an honor to do that. Just as a reminder, annually, the Echo Board, we have an annual meeting where we talk about changes on implementation that then come forward to you and make recommendations, and that comes forward to you. I would encourage you to continue to use that process. Specifically to operation, that came as a result. We were looking at something like the Cultural Council has operating dollars for not-for-profits, and we wondered if maybe there would be a better, you know, that some of the smaller not-for-profits could benefit from operational dollars. That, if that is, if I understand you, Mr. Dyer, that is, that would be required to be in the language, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I, would be this member's recommendation, and I'm not speaking for the board because we haven't had this conversation, would be my recommendation not to include that. On, on the maintenance, Mike, that can be implementation language, correct?
That's correct.
That could have been before.
That's what she said.
Not to include operation. Maintenance is different.
You're speaking of maintenance now.
Maintenance is, maintenance, I would include maintenance in implementation because Councilmember Johnson is absolutely correct. There are maintenance opportunities that people are running into. So, you have, you have the Cultural Council that does operations on, on for not-for-profits. We were trying to help that out, you know, give it a little bit of boost, but I don't know that I would, that it'd be worth it to me to put that in the language. I don't know how other, there's other Echo members out here, so you might want to hear from them. But I think that was it, and I just want to really quickly leave you with this one quote. "Volusia, Volusia County is a cooler place to live in and a more inviting place to visit because of the Echo Fund. We should not take it for granted and think its work is finished. There are still great things for it to bring about." Mark Lane, columnist of the, of the News Journal. So, thank you, Mark, if you're listening. You captured it well. So, that's it. If you have other questions for, we've got a couple members here. I think our chair might still be around, and we're happy to have those other discussions, but that was my rec, that would be my recommendation.
That's something I think that we all wanted, wanted to hear, and I think it makes sense, especially when you analyze the operational cost. You could have a small 501(c)(3) with a CEO being paid that would be part of the operation. All of a sudden, they don't pay the CEO, they get the money from Echo funds, and then what does it become? It just becomes an extension of taxes. Elizabeth? Levette? Elizabeth? Elizabeth? If you have Elizabeth, a Levette. Elizabeth Levette. I know you spoke last time, right? Okay. Kelly McGee, I know you spoke last time, and you're still here.
Mr. Chair, members of county council, Kelly McGee, 372 Heritage Estates, Lane to Land. This afternoon, I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Riverside Conservancy, a local nonprofit organization. And to your questions earlier, some specifics, we're really fortunate that we received a grant from the state this year to acquire the Seven Mile Fish Camp in Edgewater, and that is a $700,000 property. So, under your current guidelines, we could only use 25% of that land value as match. And so, we'll, we'll be able to meet your 50%, but it would be really helpful to be able to use all of the value of the land as part of the match, as well as, as in kind. At your, your, your language talks about...
Can we stop, can we stop the clock on this, just real quickly, because that intrigues me? That number obviously was put in by council.
That's in the guidance document, the grant guidance.
Okay, so that was, that was something that was put in by council that says that if you have a grant, you can only use 25% of that grant funding.
Of the land value.
Well, you said grant, though. It was a grant.
Yes, yes. We received a grant to acquire the land.
Okay. All right. Go ahead and start the clock back.
All right. Thank you. Sorry for that confusion. And, and so, your ballot language says projects. Again, in your grant guidance, it converts the word projects into facilities, right? And so, it, it talks about construction and, and the things that we know of as sort of the gray infrastructure. It would be helpful if we could use those funds for green infrastructure as, as an Echo project, like planting mangroves, living shorelines, things of, of that nature. And so, we, we support you putting the Echo program on the ballot, and we will happily participate in any of your listening sessions. Again, thank you for asking for the, the audit. We do have a lot of suggestions that, that we can provide to you. And I just, in conclusion, I received a message from Chad Truxell from the Marine Discovery Center that I'd like to read into the record on his behalf. So, Chad says, "Your foresight 20 years ago continues to pay dividends. Volusia County is envied by our sister counties for its quality of life, and more importantly, its quality of natural resources. We thank you each for being a part of this. Here we are again at a crucial juncture. We support adding Volusia Forever and Echo to the ballot before they expire in 2021. We thank each of you." Chad Truxell, the Marine Discovery Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. We had a few points brought up, and I think one is, is very intriguing, and that is the, the maintenance part, which is gonna be very, very essential, because if we don't, if we create the projects, like the trails, what's their life expectancy? Pardon? And that would be something that I have to, the operational part, I think I agree with Councilmember, former president Drama, not Drama Queen, that's, that's it. But it's Trail, Trail Queen. I can either get a big lighter now, don't I?
That hole's getting deeper, I'm telling you.
And I better get out of that hole. Anyway, it, it does now make more sense to look at something for maintenance tied maybe to the original amount some way, some, somehow that could all be worked out, but that would have to be tied to something for a ballot question. Michael, correct?
The maintenance language, I think, was already authorized under the original referendum. So, I, I don't think you'd have to change the ballot language. Operations would be a different animal, and that did not fit. Can't give a reasonable interpretation that was allowed. So, if you were open to allowing grantees, grant recipients to use Echo funds for operations, we would, council would need to add that to the ballot language before putting on the ballot.
For, for maintenance?
For operations.
Operations.
I think, I've, I've already eliminated it, but I will take the rest of the council.
Yep.
Ms. Gertman? For operational, eliminate it.
Eliminate.
I think we're, we don't want to...
Eliminate.
We want to eliminate. Ben, you're already on the, on the operational, we eliminate. Okay?
Thank you.
So, we eliminate that, then we get down to the maintenance part of it. You said it's already authorized?
It's, it's authorized, and I know I have, the original resolution that was adopted 20 years ago had a lot of details in it that did not have to be there, because it went beyond the ballot language. You know, it, it required a council to implement the program by resolution, but then specified the subject areas council would address. So, many of those sections from the resolution calling for the election could be removed if you wanted to move forward and simply say that it would be implemented, you know, and that it was a creature of the time it was adopted. So, many of the decision points we've talked about today are not outside the ballot language, but we were trying to operate off what council did originally 20 years ago to give you a temp, a, a base to, to operate from and, and direct us to change.
Okay, Ben?
Yeah, definitely to get rid of the operation, but I think what we need to look at and be careful, and this is in the resolution, and when you're talking about the maintenance or whatnot, that it's not day-to-day maintenance. What you're looking at is like if we have a building somewhere and 20 years from now it needs a roof or some kind of major improvement, then it comes through. But be cautious about not ha, being handed bills that, that day-to-day general fund or day-to-day operation of an organization tries to saddle us with.
Well, I guess the, the point I want to try to get specific on is, we do not have to include allowances for Echo funds in the ballot for maintenance, right?
Yes, sir.
We do not have to put it in there, but it could be used for that.
You don't have to change the way it is now.
That's correct, and the reason why we, it was, it was a recommendation from your Echo Board, and the original resolution calling for the election had very detailed provisions on how the money would be used, and so, we're asking for that direction today, but it's not something that would have to be decided today.
Okay. Have, have we used Echo funds for maintenance?
We have not.
Okay. I didn't think so.
And that was a policy decision by council when you implemented the program.
Okay. So, what else do you need for us on the Echo?
I, I have, I have your direction.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay. We can take a break in, I mean, like, two seconds or three seconds, and some are sitting down there saying, yes?
Mr. Chair, I just would like to, I know it's getting late, lunchtime and everything, and I was just wondering if at all we could move item 11. For those people who are here for Echo and want to hear, if we could move that up before we break for lunch.
I was going to consider that. Do we have people speaking on those? Oh, we won't listen to them. Okay. Let's, let's move to item 11. I mean, you, Claire, y'all need to take a break, or she, I know Donna needs to take a break. She, she says she needs to take a break, but here she goes, standing up.
This'll be short and sweet. Good morning.
Now, on these, we're gonna do these individually or collectively?
Let me go through it real quickly, and then I'll tell you
Go our way.
How we think you might be able to proceed. So, this year's Echo Grant Awards, we reviewed and ranked 12 applications. All applicants received a score that qualifies for an Echo grant. That total award would be a little bit over $3 million. And here you see pictorial of where they all are, so they're all over our county, which is wonderful. So, two applications do not meet the eligibility requirement, number 12, that states an applicant may not owe the county any money. There are two projects from the city of Ormond Beach, McDonald House and the Nova Tennis Complex Lighting. Those, but however, their property taxes in the amount of a little over $208,000 that are unpaid. That dispute, as you know, is still in litigation. So, previously, for the past two years, you have waived that requirement for the city, and you could do so again.
Do you need action to see if we want to do that particular thing?
Yes, sir. You can approve all of the applications, subject to a waiver for the city.
Yeah, I, I would like to approve all of the Echo grants and waive the two for Ormond, the expense on those, and, and allow those to be included.
Waiving, not waiving the expense, waiving the requirement.
The waiver requirement, number 12.
Waiving the requirement, I'm sorry.
Got a motion?
It is.
Motion made by Wheeler, second by Denny, is to approve the, all the Echo grants, waiving the requirement of debt to the county because it's in litigation. Any further discussion? And Claire, we're gonna get this ahead. Do you still need to speak? Otherwise...
No, sir, just a request to say waiver as well.
It, it's done. As I tell some of the attorneys, you need to know when you can count six votes and just be real nice and quiet. Any further discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion to approve all Echo grants, subject to the waiver of the Ormond Beach requirement passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Claire. And now, it is 12:35, and we're gonna need to break for lunch. Does anybody know if it's, and we will break for lunch, and we will see you back here at 1:30. I do this, I do this for, I do this for the big bucks.
Now, good. How about you? Congratulate.
Are we going to start with the coronavirus right now?
No.
And you want that?
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, it is 1:30 and as promised, we're back. We'll reconvene the meeting from the recess for lunch at 1:30. It is 1:30, we'll call the meeting back to order. Again, for those of you who did not hear me, it is 1:30. The meeting is called back to order. I don't know what y'all drank or ate for lunch, but we're going to take item seven. Clay, if we could get through that one. And I know we said we would do the other issue on the coronavirus presentation, but let's get, go through this and probably the next one if we can get through that to get kind of on schedule. Michael, you want to head this up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Members of Council. I'm going to defer to Michael Rodriguez just to give some legal background on the item we're about to hear.
Okay, good afternoon, members of the council. The item that's before you today is an appeal from a decision on a variance before the PLDRC. This matter is a quasi judicial matter that's before you. First and foremost, prior to that, because this is a quasi judicial matter, any ex parte communications any members of the council have had with any applicants or any other persons in relation to the facts to be presented before you here today are to be divulged. Section two, three of the code provides for a procedure which will, which will remove any presumption of prejudice for any ex parte communication. So at this point, the members of the council are to basically relate, state any substance of any ex parte communication you've had in relation to this, to this matter prior to any, to final action by this board.
Okay, I'll go ahead and answer first. If I received an email, I did not respond to it. I don't recall receiving an email. I have had no conversation with anyone on this issue. Thank you, Lowry.
I would have to let you know that I was contacted by the builder and basically was invited out to the site, which I did not do, other than that, that's all I've had.
Ben, you have to make a statement.
None that I recall.
Since my email was down, I don't know if I got anything or not, no.
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware.
Okay, thank you.
And then secondly, because this is an appeal from the PLDRC, the matter, the scope of your review is solely whether or not the decision of the PLDRC was based on competent substantial evidence. Prior to every PLDRC meeting, legal department, which in this case, I stand as counsel to the PLDRC, we provide a statement to the PLDRC members and to the applicants that are present for the PLDRC that the matters that come before the PLDRC in terms of variances are final actions on the part of PLDRC and that therefore any decision that's made is based on the record presented before PLDRC. If they wish to appeal the matter to the county council, the appeal is solely based on the evidence presented before PLDRC and no new evidence may be considered by the county council as part of this appeal. Therefore, your standard of review is, was the PLDRC's decision based and supported by competent substantial evidence? At this point, I'll defer the matter over to Mr. Irvin to make the presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. As we reference this is an appeal at the December 19th, 2019 Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. The applicant, Mr. Lemoine, representing the property owner, Mr. Zakari, presented two requests for variance. The first was for an existing home that was 27.5 feet from the property line, which is 2.5 feet into the minimum front yard setback of 30 feet. The PLDRC recommended and, or excuse me, followed the staff's recommendation for approval of that particular variance. The second variance pertained to a proposed structure that the applicant was hoping to construct on the property. The subject property is Zoned R3, which requires a minimum 10,000 square foot lot with a 30-foot front yard setback, 25-foot rear yard setback from water, and a side yard setback, minimum of eight feet, for a total of 20 feet. The request was to bring the property, the building closer to the front, requiring a variance from that front yard setback. I'm going to kind of go through the exhibits that are contained in your agenda packet, just so you have a clear understanding and those who are listening understand also what's available to them. On page 7-2, it's the summary of the, excuse me, the criteria that staff has to follow in evaluating applications for variances. These are five criteria that we look at and dictate, you know, whether or not the variance is basically a non-self-imposed hardship, that it's something that happened outside the purview of the property owner, and we can go and throw those in detail. On page 7-10 is a site plan, which shows the proposed variance. Unfortunately, it's not showing up in the overhead, but what you see is that it gives a showing of the existing structure, the proposed structure, the front yard setback and the side yard setback. On page 725 contains the applicant's justification for the variance. This is basically the application that we give them, they fill out and provide it so that that way they can explain why that is needed. On page 7-18, as you can see, is an analysis by staff. Those are the parcels, or excuse me, that's the parcel with a variety of different configurations that comply with the front yard and side yard setback. On page 7-30 through 35 are photographs that were provided in support of the application. On 7-35 is a location map. On 7-36 are some aerials. On page 7-40 are the minutes from that meeting. Just wanted to make, sorry, I just wanted to make sure we had that all on the record so that they understood that this was information that was provided to the PLDRC. In summary, what you have is that staff reviewed the five criteria and came back and looked at whether or not there is a need for a variance. The subject property is 21,000 square feet, the minimum is 10,000 square feet for this particular zoning. So therefore, there's, the lot is in excess of what is the minimum requirement. We also looked at whether or not there's adequate space or are there any other constraints that would prevent them from being able to build a similar sized structure within the setbacks. As you can see on page 7-18, this shows you the analysis that was done by county staff so that that way we could show that not only could you get the two-car garage, but the additional space that they were requesting. The applicant has identified a main concern of being able to have a structure that meets a minimum finished floor elevation and be able to park his, have a garage for parking of his cars and areas so that that way, this area which is in, area that's known to flood could be basically an area of refuge. The fact is, is the finished floor elevation is going to be the finished floor elevation regardless of what setback you're going to use. So if you comply with the 30-foot setback, you're still going to be having the same finished floor elevation that would be required. There's also been identification that the homeowners association has blessed this and that may be the case. At the time of the PLDRC, we did not have any kind of letter from the HOA indicating that they had approved this and mandated that this would be the only design. The fact is, is that regardless of the homeowners association, the county standards apply to all our three properties and so therefore, from our perspective, the HOA is just, in this particular situation, trying to prove a standard that sub what is required in all other applications doesn't have much bearing at this point. Overall, what you're seeing is that staff reviewed all five criteria and realized that all five criteria did not apply in this particular situation. And specifically, that there were special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure, sign or building involved which are not applicable to other lands, structures, signs or buildings.
Are we gonna start with the coronavirus right now?
No. And you want that?
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, it is 1:30, and as promised, we're back. We'll reconvene the meeting from the recess for lunch at 1:30. It is 1:30, we'll call the meeting back to order. Again, for those of you who did not hear me, it is 1:30. Councilmember Denny's. Councilmember Gertman. The meeting... The meeting is called back to order. I don't know what y'all drank or ate for lunch, but we're gonna take item seven. Clay, if we could, get through that one. And I know we said we would do the other issue on the virus coronavirus presentation, but let's get, go through this and probably the next one if we can get through that to get kind of on schedule. Michael, you wanna head this up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Members of Council. I'm gonna defer to Michael Rodriguez just to give some legal background on the item we're about to hear.
Okay, good afternoon, members of the council. The item that's before you today is an appeal from a decision on a variance before the PLDRC. This matter is a quasi judicial matter that's before you. First and foremost, prior to that, because this is a quasi judicial matter, any ex parte communications any members of the council have had with any applicants or any other persons in relation to the facts to be presented before you here today are to be divulged. Section 2.3 of the code provides for a procedure which will, which will remove any presumption of prejudice for any ex parte communication. So at this point, the members of the council are to basically relate, state any substance of any ex parte communication you've had in relation to this, to this matter, prior to any, to final action by this board.
Okay, I'll go ahead and answer first. If I received an email, I did not respond to it. I don't recall receiving an email. I have had no conversation with anyone on this issue. Thanks, Lowry.
I would have to let you know that I was contacted by the builder and basically was invited out to the site, which I did not do, other than that, that's all I've had.
Ben, you have to make a statement.
None that I recall.
Since my email was down, I don't know if I got anything or not, no.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, secondly, because this is an appeal from the PLDRC, the matter your, the scope of your review is solely whether or not the decision of the PLDRC was based on competent substantial evidence. Prior to every PLDRC meeting, Legal Department, which in this case, I stand as counsel to the PLDRC, we provide a statement to the PLDRC members and to the applicants that are present for the PLDRC that the matters that come before the PLDRC in terms of variances are final actions on the part of PLDRC, and that therefore any decision that's made is based on the record presented before PLDRC. If they wish to appeal the matter to the county council, the appeal is solely based on the evidence presented before PLDRC, and no new evidence may be considered by the county council as part of this appeal. Therefore, your standard of review is, was the PLDRC's decision based and supported by competent substantial evidence? At this point, I'll defer the matter over to Mr. Irvin to make the presentation.
Thank you. Clay?
Good afternoon, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. As we reference, this is an appeal at the December 19th, 2019 Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. The applicant, Mr. Lemoine, representing the property owner, Mr. Zakari, presented two requests for variance. The first was for an existing home that was 27.5 feet from the property line, which is 2.5 feet into the minimum front yard setback of 30 feet. The PLDRC recommended and, or excuse me, followed the staff's recommendation for approval of that particular variance. The second variance pertained to a proposed structure that the applicant was hoping to construct on the property. The subject property is Zoned R3, which requires a minimum 10,000 square foot lot with a 30-foot front yard setback, 25-foot rear yard setback from water, and a side yard setback, minimum of eight feet, for a total of 20 feet. The request was to bring the property, the building closer to the front, requiring a variance from that front yard setback. I'm gonna kinda go through the exhibits that are contained in your agenda packet, just so you have a clear understanding, and those who are listening understand also what's available to them. On page 7-2, it's the summary of the, excuse me, the criteria that staff has to follow in evaluating applications for variances. These are five criteria that we look at and dictate, you know, whether or not the variance is basically a non-self-imposed hardship, that it's something that happened outside the purview of the property owner, and we can go and throw those in detail. On page 7-10 is a site plan, which shows the proposed variance. Unfortunately, it's not showing up in the overhead, but what you see is that it gives a showing of the existing structure, the proposed structure, the front yard setback, and the side yard setback. On page 725 contains the applicant's justification for the variance. This is basically the application that we give them, they fill out and provide it so that that way they can explain why that is needed. On page 7-18, as you can see, is an analysis by staff. Those are the parcels, or excuse me, that's the parcel with a variety of different configurations that comply with the front yard and side yard setback. On page 7-30 through 35 are photographs that were provided in support of the application. On 7-35 is a location map. On 7-36 are some aerials. On page 7-40 are the minutes from that meeting. Just wanted to make, sorry, I just wanted to make sure we had that all on the record so that they understood that this was information that was provided to the PLDRC. In summary, what you have is that staff reviewed the five criteria, and came back and looked at whether or not there is a need for a variance. The subject property is 21,000 square feet, the minimum is 10,000 square feet for this particular zoning. So therefore, there's, the lot is in excess of what is the minimum requirement. We also looked at whether or not there's adequate space, or are there any other constraints that would prevent them from being able to build a similar sized structure within the setbacks. As you can see on page 7-18, this shows you the analysis that was done by county staff, so that that way we could show that not only could you get the two-car garage, but the additional space that they were requesting. The applicant has identified a main concern of being able to have a structure that meets a minimum finished floor elevation, and be able to park his, have a garage for parking of his cars, and areas so that that way, this area which is in, or area that's known to flood, could be basically an area of refuge. The fact is, is the finished floor elevation is going to be the finished floor elevation, regardless of what setback you're going to use. So if you comply with the 30-foot setback, you're still gonna be having the same finished floor elevation that would be required. There's also been identification that the homeowners association has blessed this, and that may be the case. At the time of the PLDRC, we did not have any kind of letter from the HOA indicating that they had approved this and mandated that this would be the only design. The fact is, is that regardless of the homeowners association, the county standards apply to all our three properties, and so therefore, from our perspective, the HOA is just, in this particular situation, trying to prove a standard that sub what is required in all other applications doesn't have much bearing at this point. Overall, what you're seeing is that staff reviewed all five criteria, and realized that all five criteria did not apply in this particular situation. And specifically, that there were special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure, sign or building involved, which are not applicable to other lands, structures, signs, or buildings in the same zoning classification. The fact is, is that the subject property does exceed the minimum 10,000 square foot minimum for the lot area. It does have area that you could possibly locate the garage and additional living space, and still comply with the code. That the applicant need to demonstrate that the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. If this was a situation where because of easements, or you peculiar space, spacing of the property, or those types of things, that's where the applicant could come in forward and say that. But right now, as you can see, the analysis that was done in your staff report indicated that there is area that they could potentially build the new structure. They have to prove, they, the applicant, have to prove literal interpretation of the provision of this article would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning classification, under the terms of the ordinance, and would work as an unnecessary and undue hardship on the applicant. Again, this comes forward when you have a particular property because of size, shape, or overall configuration makes it impossible for it to be able to be utilized for what's allowed in that particular zoning district. As you can see, within the zoning, R3 zoning district, the applicant can construct what they are seeking to do within the setback requirements. So there's no undue hardships that were preventing them from doing what could be allowed in that R3 zoning classification. They have to prove that this is the minimum variance necessary to make it possible for reasonable use of those buildings. Again, I have to go back to the staff analysis, where it shows that you can construct a two-car garage, and you can do an addition to the home, and still comply with our setbacks. So therefore, it's not the minimum setback necessary. And lastly, it has to be demonstrated that the granted variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the article and Blush County Comprehensive Plan, as amended, and such variance will not be injurious to the area involved. Again, this is just kind of a catch-all. That can be one of those things where you're sitting there, and you're trying to look, is there any kind of extenuating circumstances where you could see that because of something different in this particular property, we could say that it's, needs to be approved or denied? And unfortunately, in this situation, we do not see anything that's going to be inconsistent with any other aspect of our comprehensive plan, or land development code, or zoning regulations. So again, staff recommended denial. So you have the five criteria that are contained in our code that we utilize for our analysis. Staff has reviewed that, identified that there are opportunities to do the type of building that the applicant is seeking, and still not have to get a variance. If there's any questions for me or the staff, we're available. The applicant is up next, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that come from there.
Any questions, Mr. Irvin? Okay.
James Lemoine, DEC Construction, 890 Shattuck Drive, Orange City. You know, it's hard to disagree with anything the council just said. This is a very simple matter, maybe just a quick...
I need you to stand in front of the microphones, and, yeah, so, and you're kinda tall, so we kinda get them closer to you, so it'll pick it up. They have to have it recorded. Thank you.
Yes, just a, just a brief summary of my relationship with Austin Zakari here. Eight months ago, we made application, previous to that, we did a lot of things around hardscape, landscape, water retention, and some other mitigation that was being caused by storm floods and just general summer storms that would result in, you know, water going over into the neighbors' yards. They spent an extended amount, extensive amount of money and time in mitigating all these things. We moved to put this addition together, and while the county has given us some options here, there are non-options where the, where the HOA is concerned, and all of those options include pushing us back closer to the canal, closer to the water, closer to the storm surge. Now hardships come in different, different forms. In this particular case, they're saying, we're not saying you can't build it, we're saying you can't build it where you, where you need to build it. It doesn't only affect us in terms of the stormwater surge, and everybody here knows that feet make a difference. It also puts into, into play here, an architectural, an architectural conundrum here, that's gonna just take more time, and more money, and more, you know, we've, we've been into this for eight, for eight months. So pushing it back puts us closest to the water, and also creates an architectural, an architectural issue here that, you know, this has to remain one structure here with a, with an entrance into it that, you know, we feel that we've, we've looked at, you know, many different ways. As far as the neighborhood is concerned, we've been, given nothing but good reviews on what we're doing. These folks have spent, you know, well over $100,000 in the mitigation of, you know, their storm drainage, and, and trying to do everything that we can. The house was built a foot below flood zone, and as council, as council mentioned, this is, you know, not just a, a structure that we're building for a recreational room here. When the storm surge comes, it doesn't come for a couple of days, it comes for six and eight weeks at a time down there. And, you know, people move down to Stone Island for a lot of reasons, but they, they move down there with the give and take, knowing that this, that storm surge is going to come, and that there's, you know, some things that, you know, you'd be, need to be prepared for. They're doing their best to try to prepare for it, and I, I feel like the, the location that we're, that we've proposed here, you know, while it's closer, you know, and there's no one that respects, you know, the rules and regulations around why setbacks are, are in place here. But in this particular case, there is, you know, no future development in front of the house. You know, we're, we're not doing anything that's injurious, or would cause hardship to anybody else in the neighborhood, and, you know, this is our position, and I don't know if these folks have anything to say about it. You good? So that's...
Okay. Any questions, council? Thank you very much. Okay. Clay?
Yes, sir.
What is the indifference in the elevation from where they're wanting to put their original plan versus where we're asking them to?
As far as the lot, I'm not 100% certain, sir. Don't know.
Okay.
But if you, if we could go back to the PowerPoint? Do we have any? Okay. I wanna just kinda point out in the photographs, this is showing the rear of the home, this, let me go ahead and start.
Which one shows the rear, Clay?
Here we have the rear of the home.
Okay.
Here's the driveway and where the, the expansion would be located at. Here's the view from the street, and so, and then here's a view to the side where they would have to be placing the, the change. So what you're seeing is that it looks relatively flat with a slight decrease to the rear, and I'm gonna go to, let me try and find the... That was it. This gives you, they've added in a back patio right there, where you see that they've put in paper bricks that are encased in a, basically, for lack of a better term, a small wall there. And so this area over here is where the proposed expansion would go. So as you can see, yes, they would have, they do have a sloping backyard towards the water, which is seen...
Where's the water? The blue stuff?
Right here is the water. That, and...
And that is real water?
That's off that back patio.
Yes, sir.
But, but there's water there, I don't see it in, other than the three that we have.
Right here.
Three of 26.
I don't have three of...
Seven of 26.
I have seven of 26, I don't have three.
Okay, I think what she's looking at, she's looking at the PLDRC original packet.
Okay.
7-16.
Like a canal that comes in there.
Yes.
Oh, three of 26 on 716.
I got it.
I know that's my area, my district, and, and the Stone Island people, you know, a lot of those houses were built way back, and a time and elevation that they regret now, I guess, building. I like to try to help people out in that area as much as we can. I know when we had, I think it was Irma, I had my four-wheeler, and went all back in there, and there were so many houses that had sandbags around them, and, and trying to just survive, but...
716. Yeah. Anything else, doctor?
No.
Okay.
Just trying to see if we can help them out.
In looking at it, I, I see three other options without having to do the variance personally, as staff laid out. I don't see that it's forcing anything to be closer to the water that I see. If anything, it looks like it's gonna be away from the water unless the layout is different. If there was no other option, I could understand that, but there are options. Ben?
I agree with you. If there was no other options, I would, I would say go ahead with it, but we have, we have these property setbacks in place for a reason, and we start changing them, where do you stop? You do have setbacks, it does take something different. I mean, you know, and it, it's just a deal that, I, I think that we need to stick with what, what our zoning says, and go with one of the options.
Okay. I'd like to ask one more question if I could.
Okay, sure.
I was gonna ask, what, the proposed addition that they're wanting to build, what...
What page are you looking on?
Oh, I'm looking on 722.
Okay.
What, what is the purpose, or what's the function of that addition, or what, what are they trying to do with that?
I think the owner would probably be best to describe that, but the way it was described to us is they want a two-car garage so they can get their cars out of the area where it would flood, and they also want an area of refuge. So in other words, you would have basically, almost a spare room with the ability to have basically living space, an extra living room, those types of things. But I, I think the applicant is best to describe what they were trying to get done.
Is that what y'all are wanting to do with that?
Just state your name, state your name and approach, we just have to have this all on record.
Thank you.
Austin Zakari. Thank you for hearing our case today. So when we bought the house, Irma happened a month later, and surprising to us...
I'm sorry, please state your name again.
Austin Zakari.
Okay.
Yes.
Cause they're gonna...
I'm the owner. I'm the owner.
They're gonna, they're gonna get me, they have to record all this, you know, they take it from this, so that's why I'm being...
I'm Austin Zakari, yes.
Okay.
1465 Petal Drum Trail. So when we bought the home, a month later Irma happened, and it flooded, and of course, to our shock and dismay, our house became an island, and the house that we thought we were getting certainly was not. So we have, over the last two years, put in a tremendous amount of effort to mitigate flooding in the house. We have, as you saw, put up the stone wall, we've replaced things, put in huge amount of drainage, and different systems to try and control that. The issue with the addition, and why it would be difficult to move it backwards, we understand there's the zoning. Initially, when I went to buy the house, I called zoning and spoke with someone, I was told that the house was grandfathered in, and as you did, kind of later grandfather in that corner, we were told that we could build, you know, next to the house to have it conform with the roof, and to make sense with not being a separate structure. Once we got into it, and saw that we were not able to do that, that's why we came up with this proposed addition. So although they have offered some other possibilities, if you look at them, they're not possibilities that would meet the need, which the need is that we need to have a garage that we can park our cars in. Our entire house was flooded with water, and we need to be able to elevate it, we need to be able to connect the roof to the roof, you know, appropriately, whereas if we move it backwards, we're connecting a roof to the side of a house, at the same time, we have to have an entrance into the house, so that it becomes one structure. And in looking at all of these different things, we went through several architects, this was the best that we could come up with. Whereas they did have different shapes of structures that you see, none of them will be able to encompass a two-car garage and a living space with what, you know, was proposed. So we feel that this is the best that, that we've been able to come up with, and the best use of the land, and although it does require a variance, it does follow along with the existing house, and as we were told when we purchased the house, that, you know, it would be grandfathered in, and, and that's just basically what we're trying to do, is continue to protect our home and protect our investment.
Okay, thank you. Clay?
My, my, oh, sorry, sir.
I'd like to thank that answered your question, though.
Yeah, I just, what, what you're telling me is that what you're wanting to do with it, with the two-car garage and living space, isn't, isn't going to be accomplishable with the, with the other proposals?
No, it's not.
Just because you've come up with shapes, doesn't mean that you can fit a square peg in a round hole. I mean, it's...
Right, according to the architect that looked at it, the shapes that they proposed to us would really not be able to fit a two-car garage, and basically like a studio-style type apartment that we could live in during a time when the flooding, you know, happens.
Okay, thank you.
It was two weeks, or not two weeks, two months during Irma. I had to drive my truck out there, and there was...
I live real near you, I know what that was like out there.
The house, when she says the, the house was an island, that's, that's a misstatement, because that would imply that the house was on land that was above the water. If it wasn't for my work providing sandbags for us, and the community coming together to provide sandbags, the water would've got in the house. I have, I can't, you know, do it now, but I have pictures of freshwater shrimp swimming at my doorstep, and there was no way to get out of the car, to get to the sandbags, to check the pumps. If I didn't have pumps, the water would've been inside the house.
Okay.
We just need a place elevated so that we can live in our house during the next episode.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna wait for Clay. Billy, you...
Yeah, I just wanna ask a question, Clay. Where'd Clay go? They keep mentioning grandfathered in. Now, I'm sure when they mentioned grandfathered in, that was for the existing...
Go ahead and have a seat. We're not gonna have communication back and forth.
It was for the existing structure only.
Let me clarify about what's going on here. The house was built in 1976. As such, we don't have any records as to what specific requirements were put in place in regards to the setbacks, but it's at 27.5 feet off the easement, off the right-of-way line. So therefore, there's two options. You can go ahead and just live as it is, and then if it's ever destroyed, you would have to build it back to meet the setbacks. They chose to come in and get a variance. Staff supported the, the variance, and so it was approved. So therefore, if this house is ever destroyed, it can rebuild back to the 27.5 square, 27.5-foot front setback. Also, any kind of expansions to the house can, are gonna be held to that setback. So if they wanted to take this portion and shift it back, so it complies with the 27.5 feet, we could approve that with a building permit. So what the variance did is it took it from being a legal non-conforming structure, to now a conforming structure, because we've granted the variance on that setback. The way our code is written, that now is established a setback for all other changes to the structure. So therefore, they could build that new expansion to the 27.5-foot setback.
That was what was grandfathered, was that variance to start with?
The 27.5.
Right, as opposed to 30.
What does that do in terms of connecting the roof lines and that sort of thing?
That wouldn't have anything to...
No, I meant in terms of having them do one of the options that we have presented to them, does that create a architectural mystery?
I don't know off the top of the head, or, we did not do the design for sort of being able to sit there, you know, you look, you see, you could potentially shift it back, you could change some of the width, some of these other locations. So again, I'm not an architect, I don't wanna say, but it, it does give them options that they have.
Okay. Ben? Mr. Johnson? Okay. Clay, if you're looking at the, the one we're looking at right there, right where variance two is, what part of the proposed addition is that?
That is, I believe, the two-car garage. We have the floor plans are available, and I can't remember the page number. On 723 in your agenda packet... On seven twenty-three in your agenda packet, there's.
No, that's what I thought it was. And that's why I didn't see why either option one or two that you have there, a two-car garage, could not go in there through that same part.
Shifting the building to the southwest, you could potentially have a two-car garage. That's what we were showing on page ten dash.
So that's what that would be. That answers my question. You still could have the two-car garage by shifting the property back out of the blue area, which is the setback.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Staff has recommended that finding the PLDRC on the variance denial was supported by competent substantial evidence and the order of denial be affirmed. That's what they're asking for us today. And I can't make a motion to do that, but I would say that that is correct in what I've looked at today. That's all I've had a chance to see. Ben?
I'll make a motion to deny the current plan and.
In support of the PLDRC?
Yep, in support of DRC, yep.
Is there a second? Motion made by Johnson, second by Wheeler. Any additional discussion, counsel? Any objection to the motion? Motion objected by council member Lowry. Motion passes to deny five-one. We'll go to item eight. Ted?
Good afternoon. Ted Kasebeer, county engineer. Item eight is the contract with PNS Paving for the construction work on Tenth Street, which we talked about quite a bit lately. This is one of the last pieces. We had previously approved, or you'd previously approved, the agreements with the railroad, which were a portion of the construction within their right-of-way and a small portion without. This covers all the rest of the work that would be associated with that project from a construction standpoint. We will also have a CEI contract. It's an outside consultant that will oversee the contractor on our behalf. That will be coming to you sometime here in the near future.
Ms. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that, we just pulled it off. I am going to move approval of the Tenth Street from Myrtle Avenue to US one nineteen dash B dash one sixty-three JD C seventeen eleven.
Is there a second? Motion made, but any second by Wheeler to approve the contract for the widening of Tenth Street construction project? Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous and we'll move to item nine. And this is accepting a grant. I've heard people say they didn't want to accept grants, but maybe that was in the political realm. Sorry. Just saying.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Rick Carl, Director of Aviation Economic Resources. I'm here with Karen Feaster. You have Deputy Airport Director. And Eric Troy is Director of Projects and Maintenance. This is a good story. I'm happy to be here. This is three point six million dollars that is coming from DOT for projects that were already underway, that it reflects the relationship and the professionalism of our airport staff. I really can't brag about them too much because they're, the DOT knew that we needed these projects done and they came forth with the money unexpectedly. So I appreciate your ability to get this on the agenda. So I'd like for Karen to come forward and run through the projects real quick if you would please allow us. Karen?
Good afternoon. Okay, as Rick mentioned, the funds are from the Florida Department of Transportation. And we were fortunate because some of the airports that were unable to accept or use the funds this year, the money became available and we were ready to go on some of the projects. So we were able to take advantage of the opportunity. Okay, there's three projects. The first is the parking lot improvements. And this one has four elements to it. It's the pavement of all the short and long-term parking and associated railways. The ticket dispensers canopies, and that is a customer convenience. Lighting and sustainability project. Those will be LED lights for the parking lot. And the wayfinding signs, which are in need of renovation. And also, those will be the new colors and fonts of the new terminal project. So all of this project, all four elements of it is about seven point six million. Previously approved by council was five point seven. So the balance on here is just the remainder to fund it in full. Okay, the second project is security system. This is an upgrade to our system, which we did about eight to ten years ago. So it's just advanced technology. This will be the design portion. And the third is terminal renovations. I know you've all seen these pictures plenty of times before. We have some current ones. You can see, if you haven't been to the airport recently, you can see some of the improvements. It's really starting to come together. So here's the bag claim area before, and this is the current. So the signage is going in, all the carpeting and lighting has gone in as well.
I like the sandy carpet.
Isn't it pretty? And then the entry area before, this is the conceptual, and now you can see it coming to life. So the water features in, some of the signage on the right, on the right and left side of it, you can see being installed. And then one of the group rooms at one of the gates. So that was existing. This is our conceptual, the new gate millwork. And then there's an existing, so you can see some of the carpet, some of the seating put in at gate two. And then in the top right corner is the actual millwork. Looks exactly like the picture. Okay, also, we wanted to mention that the restaurant, they have space that's adjacent to the Dennis McGee Room, and they are relocating their bar area. So that gave us the opportunity to reconfigure some of the McGee Room space. So we have issued a task assignment to the architect that's doing the terminal project. They're looking at ways that we can better utilize that area. And we should be coming to council shortly with conceptuals and a request to add that to our construction project. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Anybody want to recommend we accept the grant?
I have my button on.
Ms. Wheeler?
A motion to approve the going out for the application acceptance of estate grant, aid for the parking lot improvement, construction project, security system upgrade, design project, the terminal renovation, specific public areas project, and budget resolutions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just before you, motion made by Wheeler, second by Dennis. Any discussion? I did come in late last night and I'd seen the carpet before, but it really makes an impression at night seeing that. And I go, here I am being a Monday morning quarterback. And in the design, I really wonder, and don't take this as being critical, just observant, why they didn't have the water feature in the front as opposed to on the sides? But that's just me. I would love to see the water feature as you walk in, coming down the middle. You've got to go stand somewhere over in the restroom area or the baggage area to pretty much see that. But that's just me and not being critical, observant.
Ms. Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I might add, the chairs, the seating that you have now, they're amazing. Very, very comfortable, very stylish. They're wonderful.
To answer your question, Mr. Kelly, it was a, it was a design limitation. We all wanted it to be exactly as you said, but they had to build around that first pillar. So that's the only way they could do it without taking up enormous amount of space. But I think you'll find it'll look nice when it's all said.
Oh, it looks great. And the other thing that I did notice last night that I had not noticed before was the pet relief area sign, wayfinding sign, which I had not seen that. And I also happened to have noticed that in Atlanta Airport, which I'd never seen before. So I guess it's something. And that's why being modernized as we're doing and the renovation, incorporating these things into that makes us into the twenty-first century. And you're doing a great job and I'm happy that you're able to apply for the money and make these changes. Any further discussion? Any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous and keep on keeping on. Thank you. Rick, you're stating therefore the.
Yes, sir.
Career Source for your plan.
Again, for the record, Rick Carl, Director of Aviation Economic Resources. We're here with the four-year plan for the Career Source Volusia Flagler four-year plan, which is required by statute for you to approve it and Flagler to approve it. So I'd like to, it's my privilege to introduce Robin King, who's President and CEO of Career Source Flagler Volusia, to give you a quick overview of the plan. Robin?
I did hear that word, "quick." Okay. Good afternoon, Robin King, President and CEO, Career Source Flagler Volusia. What you have before you today is, you know, how do you say this? You put policies in place and then when you're monitored, when we're monitored by the state, what they make sure is that we are doing the things that we say we will do. And that's what this plan is. It's a compliance plan that we will be back in two years with updates that we're required to do. It incorporates what the board has worked on our, in fact, we just redid, refocused our, if you will, our vision and mission statements, our strategic comparatives. Chairman, sorry, Councilwoman Gertman was part of that ad hoc committee that worked on that as well. The biggest change I would say to this, and it occurred to me this morning, that when we used to bring this plan before this body, we would be introduced by Donna Butler because it was more of a social service slant, right? And now we're introduced by economic development. And that is how we remain relevant in today's conversation around talent. This isn't about putting people in training for whatever they want and then hope they get a job. It's listening to businesses. What do they need? What skill sets do they need? Those are the trainings that we're investing in. And that's what's reflected in here is our sector strategies that we have aligned with Team Volusia and the two counties economic development strategies, which sectors they're focused on and making sure that we're always hearing what businesses, economic development, and education, making sure that we're all saying the same thing. So that's the plan in a nutshell. The attachments to this, for example, would include the interlocal agreement that is between the counties and us. It would include our MOUs with our required partners. The values that are in there actually are adopted by, are adopted from Career Source Florida. And it really is, there's one paragraph, I don't know if we were able to forward the executive summary to you, but it's based on current and future projected needs of local businesses. It's created using information regarding industry sectors poised for growth and places and emphasis on coordination, collaboration to ensure a seamless system for job seekers, including those with disabilities and businesses. So that's really what we do and that's what the plan, very lengthy plan, outlines.
Thank you. And what we need is a Ms. Gertman. Sorry.
Well, I'm going to move to approve the Career Source Flagler Volusia four-year plan as a board member and also chair to a new committee that we initiated. Speaking of talent development and preparation, we're doing a pilot on a youth summer program. Who remembers SITA and getting involved very early on between sixteen and eighteen? And I'm just happy that we kind of planted that seed and Robin has seen a way to make that move forward. And I will say that we were looking at a four-week program and I'm hopeful that it can be a six-week program at least. And it's going to focus on the hospitality environment and partnering with a number of local employers and trying to get those skills developed for our youth to get them prepared. Because I think so much of our conversation is about we don't have skilled staff, we don't have staff ready. And I think just the more we can plant that seed with our youth and with their parents and just get that started, the better opportunity that we will have to expand on this and similar type programs. So I thank you for that opportunity and thank you.
I'll second.
Motion made, but Gertman, second by Wheeler. Any discussion? Any question? Any objection to the motion?
I just wanted.
Hearing none, the motion passes.
I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you for that initiative. I think that's a wonderful movement. We've needed that for a long time and that's great. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you.
I'll do it again. Any other discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. And thank you, Robin, for all that you do out there.
Much for your time.
Making, because Ms. Gertman laid it right out there. One of the biggest needs we have right now is trained employees and people willing to do that. We'll move to item number twelve, which is the Williamson Contract that would be Ted. Did we already do that? We didn't do that one.
Not yet, but we also don't forget the coronavirus.
Sorry, my bad, my bad. Ted, sorry. Well, they were sitting so far in the back hiding. We'll take a moment and have from the Department of Health, a presentation. And this, just so I lay it out, all of us have our URL, but just so everyone knows, if you're listening online, this presentation will not allow basic deviation from it. This is a State Department. We are the branch of the State Department. As such, all things that are addressed out of here must have state approval and come from the state. Now, Jim may answer anything we ask because he's not confined to that. But thank you for being here today to share with us an update on COVID-19.
Good afternoon. Chair Kelly, members of the council. I'm Patricia Boswell. I'm the administrator for the Florida Department of Health in Volusia County, County Manager, Staff. Thank you for this opportunity to present on coronavirus, a disease that has now been called COVID-19. COVID-19 is a disease and a situation that's rapidly evolving and expanding. To date, Volusia County does not have any cases of COVID-19. We have been preparing for our response since January. The goal is to detect the virus, reduce the spread and impact of the virus on our communities. DOH Volusia has an all-hazards response plan that is exercised often and is being used now to guide our response. This is what we prepare for in public health. We are part of Florida's integrated public health system. We are standing up our incident management team and we are focusing on this rapidly changing situation. On March first, the Florida Department of Health reported their first two cases in the state of Florida, one in Hillsborough and one in Manatee County. As a result, the governor issued an executive order and our Surgeon General issued a declaration of public health emergency. The first cases were linked to seafood and live animal market in China, which suggests that the spread was from animal to person. We know other similar viruses have been spread from camels, cats, and bats. Now we know that it's spreading from person to person in China and has spread to people in other countries, including the United States. As of March first, there were forty-three cases in the United States in ten states, two of which are in Florida. Hillsborough County had a patient confirmed traveling from Italy within the last month. Individual risk is dependent on exposure. The virus is thought to spread mainly from person to person. The best way to prevent illness is to avoid being exposed to the virus. Most often, spread from person to person happens among close contacts, about six feet. Person-to-person spread is thought to occur mainly by respiratory deposits produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes, similar to how influenza or other respiratory pathogens are spread. These droplets can land in your mouth, your nose, and people who are nearby possibly inhale. These droplets can land in your mouth, your nose, and people who are nearby possibly inhale into their lungs. Cleaning surfaces and objects often are recommended, and with most respiratory viruses, people are expected to be contagious while they have symptoms. Symptoms may be mild to severe, and may appear two to four days after exposure. We're talking fever, cough, and difficulty breathing. At this time, there is no vaccine available to protect against COVID-19, and no medications approved to treat it. And since there is no approved treatment, we are recommending that people that are infected with COVID-19 receive supportive care to help relieve their symptoms. We are asking that people who think they are infected with COVID-19 stay at home and remain isolated. They can call the health department, and also their healthcare provider if needed. Currently, we can do testing here in Florida. The public health laboratories in Jacksonville, Tampa, and Miami are now able to test. The department is collaborating with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to conduct surveillance for persons who may have been exposed to or infected with COVID-19 while traveling to any of the impacted countries, or have been in contact to a case, and will make arrangements for testing. So our efforts now are containing the virus. We want people, we want to prevent people from getting sick. We want to protect the most vulnerable, which are the older adults in our population, and those with underlying medical conditions. Since there is no vaccine available for COVID-19, the best way to prevent the infection is to avoid being exposed to the virus. We have recommended actions available to prevent the spread, and that includes washing your hands often with soap and water at least 20 seconds. Also, if you don't have soap and water, use hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol base. Yes. Try saying that three times. It's all 62. Good. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home when you are sick. Cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue, then throw the tissue away, and clean and disinfect frequently. So travel advisories. The World Health Organization is recommending you not travel if you're sick. They also have other information available about steps to take if you are traveling. CDC has all the information on updated travel advisories. As I mentioned, this information is changing daily. Right now, China, Italy, South Korea, and Japan, and Iran are the impacted countries with impacted regions. The CDC and U.S. Customs have implemented enhanced screenings for people coming from these impacted regions to detect travelers with fever, cough, or difficulty breathing when they're entering the United States. The procedures include travelers filling out a short questionnaire about their travel, any symptoms, and then how we will contact them. We are monitoring the current outbreak and disseminating information to all of our local partners. We are coordinating our efforts with emergency management, as well as with our school district. For people who have come into the country from some of those impacted regions, they are asked to self-isolate for 14 days upon completion of their travel. We have been and will continue to provide guidance from CDC. CDC will notify us of a traveler or close contact of a positive case. Our epidemiology staff contacts that person, asks about symptoms, provides information on prevention and control, provides a thermometer and mask, and they're taking their temperatures twice daily and staying home. We are providing statewide information through floridahealth.gov, and also the CDC resources. We have a phone number that people are instructed to call. It's a central phone number at, let me go back to that one. It's 1-866-779-6121, and that information will be provided to all of you. There's also the floridahealth.gov/covid19 website, as well as the cdc.gov website. The information at CDC has produced as multiple guidance documents for infection control, hospital preparedness assessments, personal protective equipment supply planning, guidance for business and schools, and this information has been shared with not only our school districts and our governments, our municipalities, both employers and employees. Do you have any questions?
Kind of preface the fact that there's probably some questions that you cannot answer at this time, but anybody who has questions?
If it was in the PowerPoint, I can answer.
I don't have any questions on that, but I mean, does anyone have any questions? I think we're fortunate that we have zero cases at this point.
Correct.
I think that's important to note. Can you answer a question that's not in the PowerPoint, but that's relative to just the regular flu?
Sure.
How many cases of the flu have been reported in Volusia County?
Well, in Volusia County, I didn't bring that specific number, but I will get it to you. We are seeing an increase in flu.
Right.
This is the time of the year that people are doing a lot of coughing. There's allergies to different pollens happening as well. We have seen way too many pediatric deaths this particular flu season nationally. We haven't had any here in Volusia that I'm aware of, but I will send you the numbers, but it is increasing.
Right. Well, there's two things that were not included in here that I saw nationally by the federal Department of Health, and one was they said, continue to get the flu vaccine.
Correct.
Especially for that. And the other one was that they seem to be, that there's not any, the youth seem to be immune, just not necessarily immune, but you're not seeing cases in younger people, young adults. It doesn't seem to be in the teens and so forth, or not having in the COVID-19, but that's
Symptoms range from mild to severe, and we're seeing the severe symptoms in that older population or people with underlying medical conditions. So there are people that may have the virus that aren't aware of it because they're showing those symptoms.
Right.
And we'd expect that to be in a healthy youth, for example. But yes, please, it's not too late to get that flu vaccine.
And wash 20 seconds of soap and water.
Think happy birthday.
Ms. Gertman.
If you're wondering how long 20 seconds is.
I was just going to ask, in regards to travel and air travel, is it, are there any other further precautions that are taken?
Certainly the same sanitary precautions that you recommend with the hand washing, covering your mouth if you're coughing, make sure, you know, you're not flying if you're sick. I would certainly check the CDC website. All the travel advisory information is available there. Because it changes so often, I think that's the message that we're really trying to get out, that CDC, as well as the Department of Health, the Florida Department of Health websites, will continually be updated with information to ensure that you do have a safe trip. Thank you.
I don't think the people on my flight last night got the message about traveling and coughing and how to cough, and of course, the best thing is
If you don't have a tissue covered.
This is the best one.
Yes.
And then even some that won't even cough in their hand or something, just
Stay six feet away.
Oh, yeah. Well, they were two rows behind me, so I hope I was okay. Thank you for that information, and I think it makes us all feel
Thank you for the opportunity, as always, it's a pleasure to come.
Another important fact that you mentioned there is that you've been on top of this since January. This just didn't come out of the woodwork yesterday or last week. We've been aware of it, state has been aware of it and been active, and probably the reason to declare the situation is to be able to get the federal funding, anything federal available.
Yes.
Not that everybody's going to be hit with it.
Correct.
All of a sudden, you get a, you know, when we declare a disaster, Jim can know this, we get calls from New York, are y'all okay? Yeah, well, it hit Tampa, or it hit some, you know, 200 miles from here, but anyway. Thank you very much. Any other questions? And thanks for taking your time to do this.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you and have a good afternoon.
Thanks, Jim. You're going to tell us something else separate, aren't you? We get the real juice now.
Well, good afternoon, Chairman Kelly, members of the council, Jim, Judge, Emergency Management Division Director. So from emergency management, communications, resource management. So from the communications perspective, every Monday afternoon, we've got a conference call with the cities and the counties on situational awareness. On Wednesdays, we have a healthcare call with all of our public health providers throughout the state. And now, starting tomorrow, or starting this Thursday, we'll have a Florida Division of Emergency Management Conference Call. Patricia and I have a meeting tomorrow to begin, continue to talk about it. We've been monitoring this all the way back. We saw when it came out in China that it was going to just get legs and grow, you know, given the world being such a small place anymore with the travel, that it was pretty evident that this was going to continue. But then also, we've got a meeting on Friday with a lot of our public health and hospitals and public safety personnel, and continuing next Wednesday with a lot of our public information folks. So been very busy with keeping up with that, and then having that information flow down to our community partners. So I'm clogging up a lot of emails ever since this all started, but making sure that the information that we get is passed down and shared with our municipalities, with our public safety partners, and that has been ongoing. Of course, we are standing by for whatever may come our way, you know, is this going to be a tropical storm, or are we looking at a category five? So we're always planning for the worst. We've got our local state of emergency. We could put that together if need be, our managers advisory group. We're, you know, no strangers to doing those for hurricanes. Certainly, we can do that in this event as well. So again, lots of communication that are going on. Incident action plan, we would develop in partnership with the Health Department. But again, you know, we've had West Nile in 2002, we had SARS in '04, we had the avian flu in '04, we've had swine flu in '09, we've had Ebola that we've worked very closely on back in '14, Zika, H1N1 HEPE, so, you know, this isn't our first rodeo. It is a big one, but we're doing everything we know to do to be prepared. So how about a quick trivia question? We've got the hand sanitizer out there, so you use that hand sanitizer, how long do you think that's good for? Hours?
No.
Two minutes.
Ah.
Two minutes. So, you know, as we use that hand sanitizer, oftentimes we think, wow, this is going to be good for a lot of handshaking and all that, but it's good for two minutes. So there's no, you know, there's no replacement for that good old soap and water. As Patricia mentioned, 20 seconds, you know, getting the fingernails really well. But again, you know, if we come in contact with something, we shake a few hands, well, we want to use that hand sanitizer, but maybe 30 minutes later, we want to, you know, use that again. So, and also, it expires. So make sure when you look at hand sanitizer, what's the expiration date? From the time from manufacturer till the expiration date is generally three years.
2012.
We need to
I bet we got a discount on this.
Luckily, emergency management just happens to have several cases, Mr. Reckonwald, that we can get over here for you, because again, if it's expired, what happens is the alcohol content evaporates.
Evaporates.
So you're really not doing yourself any good at all, so.
Mine is 2010.
And for
Been through a few councils.
The date tells what people who put this up here think about the person they put it for.
I will make sure that we get that fresh hand sanitizer brought over today, but also for Mr. Reckonwald, I did read something of importance to you, sir. There is a potential for a shortage of Diet Coke coming in the next few weeks, so please sort of plan accordingly. We also are reviewing all of our continuity of operations plans and, you know, just working within our Department of Public Protection. So again, we've got a terrific partnership. We continue to work together throughout the community to prepare for whatever may come our way.
Good, thank you.
A hand washing lesson?
20 seconds with hot water and soap lasts all day.
That's a good question, but what that does, you do, you do. So again, it's like our mothers told us, and we tell our kids and our grandkids, don't ever miss a chance to wash your hands with soap and water.
Why do I feel safer now that you've addressed us? I just, you come into our presence and I feel safe.
Ms. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for this presentation. And, Mr. Reckonwald, this is part of telling the story that we just do day in and day out in preparation in our daily normal activities that we need to highlight more, because I knew that you were meeting, I didn't know, you know, all the meetings that are just scheduled with everybody throughout the county and all the different agencies, that, yeah, this is a really, this is a really big deal, and it just proves yet again the collaboration between our cities, our agencies, and the county, and how we all work together for our citizens to be prepared. So I didn't know, I know you all do great work, we just, of course, you do your day-to-day, which you do day in and day out, but I think, I think our community needs to know that. And maybe we can get something up, Mr. Reckonwald, about emergency management and how all this coordinates and in a timely effort. It's ongoing. It's not just when there's a red flag up, it's ongoing.
It really is, and, you know, we tend to focus a lot on the hurricanes, but we're busy year-round with things, and Jim is just, you know, I think he's one of the best in the state, maybe the nation, with what we do here in Volusia County, and we'll keep that going. And he mentioned, I didn't want to gloss over it too much, there the continuing operations plan. I mean, that's a threat that we look at. If we get a lot of people sick, we would, you know, we have a plan on how we would handle that, and we would go into that, because this is something where, like, they said, we don't want people to come to work sick and then spread it around. So we'll be talking about that with the management team, and where we go from here as this thing, as we monitor the situation. Okay, Ben.
I've been with the county now for almost 50 years, and I just want to say, Jim, you are, out of all emergency management directors, have been the most forward-thinking and easy to work with, and that's an important thing. You're always there, you, it's just a pleasure to work with you and the professionalism you bring. I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. If nothing else, one quick thing, and I'm sure we could do it, I don't know whether you feel it's necessary, but could we have a website link or a website, something, just in case? I mean, this information, a lot of the information is out there, a lot of misinformation is out there, but if we had something that's factual like this, that you could put out, you probably already had done it. Well, we're working on it. We've already discussed the need to have it on our site and some others as well, so we're working on it. Figured as much. Thought I'd mention it. Thank you. Go have a great rest of the day, and wash your hands. Ted, back to Williamson.
Good afternoon. Again, it's Ted Kasevier, county engineer. This item is associated with the Williamson Project. When we got the grant from the state back in March of 2018, part of that required that we show that we had the remaining money necessary for the project. At that point in time, we had a small amount of proportionate fair share, a large amount that was local option gas tax, and we now have collected enough proportionate fair share money to pay for the rest of the project. So we, with this budget resolution, will pull that local option gas tax that was previously articulated and replace it with that proportionate fair share.
Cool. We need a motion? Motion made by Lowry to, a second by Wheeler, for the budget resolution for Williamson Boulevard, widening from LPGA to Strickland Range Road. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. Thank you, Ted. Brian.
Good afternoon, Chairman Kelly, county council. I'm Brian Rothel, Activity Project Manager. Item number 13 is a sponsorship request from Daytona State Foundation Incorporated for their Women's History Luncheon being held on March 25th in the amount of $750. Item number thirteen is a sponsorship request from Daytona State Foundation Incorporated for their Women's Histor- History Luncheon being held on March twenty fifth in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a motion?
Ms. Wheeler.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the sponsorship request from the Daytona State College Foundation Incorporated with Women's History Luncheon for seven hundred and fifty.
Second.
Motion made by Wheeler, seconded by Gertman, to approve the sponsorship for the Daytona State Foundation Women's History Luncheon. Any discussion? Any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Now we'll go to item thirteen A.
And thirteen A is a sponsorship request from Boy Scouts of America Central Florida Council, Southeast Volusia County Boy Scouts Golden Eagle Dinner in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Ms. Wheeler. Ms. Denny's.
Nope, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I will make the motion for the sponsorship request for the Boy Scouts of America Central Florida Council, Southeast Volusia County Boy Scout Golden Eagle Dinner on April first for the amount of fifteen hundred.
Motion made by Denny, seconded by Wheeler. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. And I will be there, I can tell you that. And we go now to item fourteen. Right, Brian.
Okay, fourteen is the amendment to, to the special events sponsorship policy. Back in October first, County, County Council originally approved the establishment of the event sponsorship policy. With the event sponsorship policy, it allowed nonprofit organizations five oh one C three and C four requests for funding for their events. The policy was set at fifteen hundred dollars, but it did not have a cap, the number of sponsorships that an agency could request in one year. Based on your conversation on February four, meeting council-directed staff to develop language into the policy to allow agencies to submit multiple sponsorship requests as long as the aggregate amount does not exceed fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, Ben.
I make a motion to amend the event sponsorship policy.
Motion made by Johnson, seconded by Wheeler, to amend the special events policy to limit the sponsorships to fifteen hundred dollars annually by any one qualifying organization. Any discussion? Any objection to that? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. We'll move to item fifteen. Kevin.
Good afternoon, County Council members. Kevin Captain, Interim Community Information Director. For the events in March, we have one event, and it's actually a very timely event. And we just had Chad McMe on Volusia Today this morning to speak on it. Turtle Day. It's gonna be Saturday, March twenty eighth, from ten AM to three PM. Staff will explain how they care for injured birds, sea turtles. Vendors will sell food, and there'll also be face painting, crafts and live music. So again, that's Saturday, the twenty eighth. Also, just to bring to your attention, council members Wheeler and Gertman are very busy with census activities. And we have a list of events that are pending here for March, as well as staffers Pat Kewen and Brian Rothwell. So we have a busy month of events for census coming up. And that'll, and that's it for now, for, for March.
Thank you so much. And we'll move now to item sixteen. And this is appointments to the Contractor License and Construction Appeals Board. Each council member shall make one nomination from the following categories. We need seven appointments from the categories for two-year terms commencing April first. Does anyone wish to make a, Dr. Lowry?
I'd like to nominate Michael Wojnack, engineer.
Okay. And we, I think on these, we have to do each one individually until I can change the law on that, right? Okay, so... Which, who was that that you nominated?
Last one, Michael Wojnack.
Wojnack. Michael Wojnack had been nominated for the board. Any objections to that nomination? We don't have to vote on this one, do we?
It's just a nomination.
Any objection? This is one that always confuses me.
We just don't need to make a second, no second.
No second.
Vote on it.
Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Ms. Wheeler.
Would like to make motion to nominate Mike McDonald.
Mike McDonald for the board? Any objections to that motion? Hearing none, that motion passes. Ms. Denny's.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Mitch Cole.
Mitch Cole, mechanical contractor. Any objection to that? Ms. Denny's, your nomination is confirmed. Ms. Gertman.
I'd like to nominate, is it John Minout?
John Minout.
Manel.
Pardon?
Manel.
Minout?
Manel.
John Minout, sorry, I got, but we know who it is, right? We got him? Any objection to that? Hearing none. John Minout, Minout is confirmed. And I will nominate James A. Jones. Any objection to that motion? What? Is there, huh? I can't nominate one?
No, you can. That's no objection.
One more second.
No objections.
Since no one objected to my motion, he's confirmed, James Jones. Do we have anybody else left?
Yeah, we got...
You.
Well, we got two on there. I've seen Marcy Zimmerman and Alan Kajak.
Did we, yeah. Did we nominate Alan?
Who nominated Alan Kajak?
Who, Alan Kajak?
Kajak.
Kajak. Any objection? Hearing none, Alan Kajak is confirmed. So we now have six on there. We need one more. And I guess we'll have to hold it till next time.
Yeah, we're down to Marcy's name.
Uh, huh, what?
Need electrical.
We're, we're waiting for another application. We don't have any other applications in.
Well, I guess we'll just have to wait.
Get another application and we'll bring it forward.
So we're hunting for electrical.
Okay, we lost it, we lost our electrical, didn't we?
Yep.
Alrighty then, bring us back an electrical at the next meeting or so. Don't tell me we made it through all sixteen and we're down to the, the end, right? George, public participation. You know who I missed today? Our number eight man. Not much. He's not here. So, Mr. Johnson? Oh, no, sorry, George.
I, I don't have anything, sir. Thank you.
Michael.
Nothing, and also I have no update on the Amendment Ten Legation.
You knew that was coming.
Yet, so I thought I would preempt it.
Okay, and then we'll start with Mr. Johnson.
Nothing.
Thank you. Finished my ethics, four hours, got that done, yay, yay. I also did a proclamation at the, the annual dinner for the Fifth Annual Arts Week. Volusia and Nancy Lowman was, won the, and her husband Lowell won the Tippin Davidson Award. Just wonderful servants for the whole community. Also, I went to Long Street Elementary last week. I was invited by their principal, and the children there had camp carnival event on Saturday. And it was like a six-week camp. And this year, their project was, they were to work on conservation issues. And it was really interesting what they came up with. And they, they, each group had their own individual things, like how to conserve bottle caps, you know, and you, things you could make out of the bottle caps, how to lift things that were in the water and clean up the water. One little gentleman had a whole dissertation on, he brought his computer and everything, on grass rooftops. You know, he's, he said, just water them and mow them. And they have organized a beach cleanup for April the eighteenth. And, and they want to, they were so excited that I came, and they want to continue this energy towards conservation issues. So I'll be getting back with them each year to see how they're progressing, and it, it was really, really something. This last week, I also had a meeting with Embry-Riddle with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Group. And we met, and their Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee and the International Economic Development Council. And we met at Embry-Riddle, and we had a gentleman there from SGI Global Business Advisors. And we toured quite a few things. And I turned that over to the economic, they weren't able to attend, it was a last minute thing. And it was just very insightful, they were very impressed, and hopefully that'll come up with some new things. And, oh, I wanted to make sure that we have on the next agenda to approve the annual Sheriff's Foundation that we did last year, sponsorship that I sent to you, so.
Of what?
I, yeah, I had sent it two weeks ago, but my email didn't go through. So I've been sending it, I sent it three or four times, so it's, it's been up there somewhere in the cloud. Yes, so I sent it again when, now that everything is working, I'm hoping. So, but we need to get that approved, so they know that. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Denny's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a final, we would, we did ribbon cutting. Councilman Johnson joined us for the Park Avenue. It's finished, Ted. You don't have to do that capital improvement movements anymore, except we traded it, Tenth Street for Park Avenue. It's a great project, took a lot of work, a lot of changes, a lot of changing courses, and it's not a straight road. They had to curve it out a little bit to accommodate for the airport and a few other things. So that's a really big project that we worked on in the collaboration. I wanna thank staff for that. That was not an easy lift. And what I didn't realize, and I do have a notebook on all these projects at home, I really do. I went on Park Avenue, started in two thousand and thirteen. In two thousand and fourteen, it was a county, we had an agenda item. FDOT wanted to reduce the lanes on Park Avenue and take the bike trail alignment right parallel to the road. And we said, no. Now we've got that beautiful trail offset, and we have expanded Park Avenue. So that was a pretty, that was a lot of work, I can remember from the council at the time. And then we took it to TPO and had their support with the city commission. So FDOT worked with us, and it, there was a lot, there were a lot of moving parts on that particular project. It doesn't seem like a big deal, but when you're working on it for four, five, six years, and you realize the steps that you, I mean, we make these results, you know, we pass these motions, but when you go back and you look at the footprint and the timeline on a project, it's, it's really, it's really something to see a, a project like that finish so successfully. Everybody's happy. It was really good.
Thank you.
Staff did a great job. Thank you for that. It's, and I look forward to, that Tenth Street, we, we tried to do a tent since we were there anyway with the same team. We could go from the ribbon cutting to the groundbreaking. And I, that was just, they couldn't handle it, Mr. Reckonwald, so we let them slack off and, but would like to do a groundbreaking, that's a big deal. The community is really looking forward to that one, too. And I know we just did our, the paving contractor on Tenth Street today as part of that, so it's coming together, too. So put that somewhere in the timeline for a groundbreaking with the two cities, who's, Edgewater and us down there, be great. Very well celebrated, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gertman.
Thank you, Chair.
Honoree.
I'm sorry?
I figured I'd get that, because you're not gonna mention it yourself. He was recog, recently recognized and being honored, I guess, the first?
The Junior League, what, Friday?
Five. Four. Go ahead, tell us. Come on.
Anyway, so this Friday is recognition of ten women from Deland for Women of the Year. I think you're also talking about this Saturday. I was recognized for the Evelyn Robinson...
Yes.
Award out of Orange City. So that, that was really special, because she was a pioneer for that area, so. But thank you for acknowledging that. What I wanna share is an acknowledgement for Ms. Marisol Behina out of Pearson. She had an event, a census event, that there were probably three to four hundred from that community, five generations. And just very inspiring to see the community unity and the family unity in Pearson. So I was really excited that she was able to do that. So you talk about a trusted voice, so I thank her and, and those that made that happen. I also wanted to mention being selected for the Executive Board of TPO and traveling later this month for a training in regards to that. Also, this past Saturday, I was at Spring Hill Resource Center, and Kelly McGee and others, our county staff, were having a resiliency training for burgeoning small business, those that are interested in small business. And maybe some that are difficult to rehire or to hire, and looking at business opportunities for the community. So I was really pleased to be there. There's another group called Hustle, that's local small business that's trying to create a mentoring program with Evan Keller and several other business leaders throughout the community. So I'm just glad to see those small types of projects coming together. When we talk about small investments that mean a lot, that really touch people where they are. I, I like seeing that throughout our community, because I think that's where we really start to rebuild the trust, is when we're investing at that level where it impacts people directly. Lastly, during our workshop, we had a question that came up about potential changes to our charter. And I would like for us to get that on an agenda and have that conversation again to determine if we're all in agreement with putting something out there and letting the people decide. So if we can put that out on the, on an agenda item, and I would also ask, ask if staff could do some comparison, collect some data for us, so we can have a presentation where we're looking at our peer counties and how we match up in regards to those concerns that were brought up. Is that doable?
Yes.
Thank you.
And start off by thanking Ms. Gertman and Ms. Wheeler both for their involvement. And you just pointed out on the census, that this is very, very important that we get this done. I mean, I thank y'all for both taking your time to, to do that. And while I'm, I'm doing that part of it, I'm gonna, Ms. Wheeler has asked if she could be excused from the Flagler Volusia Early Learning Coalition, and I have said yes. But I'd like to put you back where you came from on the VOTRAN Disadvantage Board where you served. Well, you were on there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you were there, and we switched it. Okay. The person that is on there, this is my decision? It's my decision to make that based upon reviewing minutes and things, and I'd like for you to go back on it. So that will, will take place. And if anyone wants to volunteer, Ms. Gertman?
No. I'd be open, I'd be open to working with her on VOTRAN or, or taking VOTRAN.
Well, we can put you on as an alternate to that. Or maybe y'all, I don't know if you could... Would you rather take the VOTRAN?
I'd rather take VOTRAN if somebody could take the other. Maybe Ben or Fred.
What about this then?
I'm sorry?
I mean, I'm just saying, thinking out loud. Instead of, instead of Billy going back to VOTRAN disadvantaged, you're talking about the VOTRAN disadvantaged one, right?
Right.
Right. You willing to go back there?
I'm, I'm, I'm willing to deal with that.
You got it.
But I would, I'm saying, who's gonna take the one that Billy's not gonna handle?
The early low and, well, that is now all, everything is in Flagler. All the meetings are in Flagler for the rest of this year. And the only thing that we're involved in is getting involved on a committee to be a fundraiser. And I guess we have to be on it. Marcy? You know more about that board than I do. All I know is it's complicated, because I tried to get on it.
Mr. Chair, okay, we have to by state law, by implementation law, Florida Statute four eleven. I'm the first chair of the Early Learning Coalition Flagler Volusia. No, I chaired that for five years. But what they do is they rotate, they're, they're all in one county one year and flat, the other county. And that's what makes it difficult. But to that end, if you'd like to buy ducks, they have a duck racer, five dollars a duck. I just bought ten ducks for the race coming up here shortly, but...
We have to have someone on the board. Which we do.
Somebody, we...
It's a call-in, you can call in. I just...
And you can attend, you can attend the, you can attend the meetings by calling in. Fred? Ben? One of you young men? Fred.
One of the dangers of not coming to a meeting is getting appointed for a commission seat.
Barbara, thank you for being willing to, to go to that. I think you'd be very, okay, we'll, we'll hold off on, on the Early Learning Coalition. Won't worry about that one at this point in time. I know I've got a couple more things here. Oh, thank you for bringing up the workshop, follow-up on the charter amendment things that we need to look at and one other thing that I would like for us to discuss, I know we brought it up, it goes nowhere, would be to re, a reevaluation or reassessment of our current board situations, especially on how we by resolution have to make those appointments. There has to be easier way, it can't be prescribed by law that they have to be that way. If they are, we create a new law.
I will review this with Mr. Reckonwald.
Okay.
I know that we did do an update sometime about 10 years ago, so it's probably time to take a look at it again.
Okay.
But is that also the boards we participate in?
Yes.
Or also the ones we assign?
Both.
Okay.
All of them.
Thank you.
Ones we're on, ones we participate and the others and look at those and see what that one's going. And again, thank you for allowing me the latitude to casually discuss and listen to the comments from the individuals today. I thought it was very helpful to them as well it was to us and it, I will not make it a habit of reaching out, but I felt like with them here, it was a good way to, A, let them hear what we had first, which normally we would hear from them first. This way they could hear what we're facing to be more informed and be able to offer input, constructive input for us going forward. And with that, I know I'm forgetting something, if not, we adjourned at 3:01.